The March 9th, 2017 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Mr. Pons.
Here.
Mayor Friling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
We have before us the council meeting minutes from February 6th and February 9th, 2017. Are there any edits or additions to the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that they're approved.
Second it.
Ms. Scott?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
We have no matters of special privilege today, so we will move right into the public hearings, first of which is a request to the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation in two parts, PCR 17-001, a zoning amendment, proposed ordinance 17-02, and PCR 17-002, a special use permit request for 902 Richmond Road. Mr. Collins, Ms. Murphy?
Let Carolyn Murphy handle the staff report.
Welcome, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. Mayor Friling and city council members, the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation is proposing to purchase and convert the Days Inn at 902 Richmond Road from a hotel to a student dormitory. The Days Inn property consists of 102 rooms and 102 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to lease the property to the College of William &amp; Mary for use as an undergraduate, non-freshman residence hall with a capacity not to exceed 180 students. A copy of the applicant's statement was included in your packet. The applicant proposes to amend the following sections of the zoning ordinance, Section 21-2 definitions to define a student dormitory, Section 21-255.4 to allow a student dormitory in the LB2 district with a special use permit, and Section 21-255.5 to allow the maximum number of rooms permitted to be determined as part of the special use permit process. The college notes in their application that due to the age and variety of on-campus housing, a significant renovation program will be underway that will impact the housing availability in the future. The immediate reason for the purchase of the Days Inn stems from the planned renovation of Landrum Hall, which houses 225 students, which is doing for renovation during the next academic year, followed by the Green &amp; Gold Village and the Boditot complex, among others. The property will be operated by the college's Office of Residence Lives, and students will be subject to college rules and regulations. They propose to staff the facility with one head resident and five resident assistants, whose responsibilities and hours are noted in my memo. They propose that a specific police officer be assigned to the property who will work directly with the residents and student affairs staff. Patrol units will routinely patrol the area on a continuous basis, and a phone number has been provided for anyone with issues to report directly to the William &amp; Mary Police Communication Center. Students with vehicles residing at the Days Inn will have the ability to purchase general residential parking decals from the college and will have access to the controlled parking spaces using their college ID card. Site improvements, too, are noted in my memo and include removing the swimming pool, updating lighting, fencing, updating electrical systems, fire protection, fire alarm, and detection systems, and repairs to the building and property. This rendering indicates the proposed fencing that was conceptually approved by the Architectural Review Board in February. The proposal is to convert the motel rooms into student dormitory rooms for use as an undergraduate, non-freshman residence hall with a capacity not to exceed 180 students. The college is implementing a significant renovation program that will take individual residence halls offline for an academic year and two summers to update their dormitories. This will require additional housing stock to mitigate the loss of beds due to the proposed renovations. Their immediate need, as stated in their application, is driven by the planned renovation of Landrum Hall scheduled to occur during the next academic year. With 225 beds being removed from the inventory and up to 180 beds being added if the application is approved, a deficit of 45 beds will need to be absorbed either on campus or off campus. If the Days Inn proposal is not approved, the applicant has stated in their application they do not have the capacity to absorb these students on campus. Therefore, these students will need to find off-campus housing. A concern is that after 10:00 PM from Monday to Friday and 11:00 PM on Saturday and Sunday, the HR and RAs monitor the site from their rooms. The close proximity of the site to neighborhoods requires additional monitoring of the site to mitigate noise and safety of students residing on the property. When evaluating their requests, one must take into account the impact on adjacent neighborhoods to the Days Inn property and the impact to the city as a whole. Those neighborhoods adjacent to the site will see an increase in the number of students walking, biking, and driving to campus. An increase in noise and trash will likely be associated with an additional 180 students in this quarter. However, conditions can be placed on the property to help mitigate these concerns. Impacts on the city as a whole with approving the request will be that up to 60 dwelling units throughout the city may not be converted to student rentals. The impacts of dwelling units being converted to student rentals in neighborhoods in close proximity to campus will likely increase noise, trash, and affect property values in these neighborhoods. The city needs to ensure that land use decisions are made that are fiscally balanced from a revenue standpoint, and that removal of commercial property to a residential use is mitigated. The loss of revenue associated with the conversion of the property from revenue-producing property to a non-taxable property ranges from $60,000 to $90,000 a year. This revenue loss does not take into account future revenue if the property were to be redeveloped into another commercial use. The loss of commercial use for the property can be mitigated by placing a time limit on the property to allow for renovation of the existing dormitories on campus. With a time limit, the college and city can work together to find other opportunities to construct modern housing in the midtown planning area, thereby allowing for the redevelopment of this property into a mixed-use property. The Comprehensive Plan recommends the midtown planning area as a location for new student housing. It also states that locating student housing in this area has the potential to free up affordable housing in existing neighborhoods. The proposed dormitory is located on the edge of the midtown planning area and would have the potential to prevent additional houses in city neighborhoods from being converted to rentals. When evaluating the impacts on the city as a whole, housing 180 students in one location under the supervision and regulations of the college is preferred to 180 students living in other neighborhoods in the city. If the college cannot house 180 students in college housing, this will result in additional housing units that may be absorbed in neighborhoods and other areas in the city. Until new housing stock is built in the city, the temporary solution to house 180 students as proposed by the applicant at 902 Richmond Road is acceptable if impacts such as noise and aesthetics are mitigated. The proposal is supported by the policies and recommendations set forth in the 2013 Comprehensive Plan, as noted in my memo. Planning Commission held a public hearing at their February meeting. The applicant, the applicant's attorney, and 14 citizens spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommended to city council via a vote of 213 that the request to add student dormitory to allow a student dormitory with a special use permit and to amend the light area density requirements in the LB2 Limited Business Neighborhood District be proposed ordinance 17-02 and that a special use permit be approved with the following conditions. One, the permit shall be valid for a period not to exceed 10 years from the date of approval. The proposed six-foot fence shall be located at least five feet from the side property lines to allow for landscaping. An onsite security guard be in position on the property daily from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The approval being limited to the current building only. Any major changes to increase the density, footprint, or to construct additions on the property must be submitted and approved by the city. The college shall provide bike racks at this location. The college needs to adequately address parking needs for the project. A parking plan must be submitted and approved by city council prior to the issuance of building permits for the site. A minor site plan must be submitted and approved by staff addressing the site plan issues noted above. And finally, the number of students excluding staff shall be limited to 80 students. With that, that's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Vernon Geddy, the applicant's attorney, and other representatives also here from the college, who will speak after my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor. I was made aware today that because my wife's an employee of the College of William &amp; Mary, that on advice of both our city attorney and the Virginia Conflict of Interest and Ethics Advisory Council, I should not participate in today's discussion. I've spent considerable time in the last week and a half meeting with both the applicant and members of the community, and it's disappointing that I won't be able to participate having prepared. And I apologize to those of you who took time to sit and talk with me over the past week. I wish I could participate today.
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Just a couple of questions, Ms. Murphy. The fence that they're proposing, staff's recommendation is that it be five feet away from the property line, but in the diagram, it's on the property line. And I'm just curious, if it moves five feet in, will that eliminate parking? How does that?
They've revised the proposal based on the recommendation of the Architecture Review Board and staff, and this is a little bit better diagram. You can see to the right, they're showing that five-foot in a fence with landscaping and along the rear, and then they're proposing the left-hand side to leave that area as proposed, except for the portion up there on, adjacent to the Montessori school. You can see that little green area that shows the landscaping and the proposed fencing. And of course, since staff's recommendation, they're also proposing to do the fence across the front, similar to what you have over at the Alumni House with brick pillars and the metal fence between the pillars, as shown in this diagram that I showed you, this one.
And that doesn't eliminate any of the parking?
They will lose some parking spaces, especially on the right-hand side and probably some in the rear, but they're trying to keep as many of the parking spaces on the left-hand side from the building back that they can, and they may have the, they're looking at evaluating that and trying to figure out the parking count, and the applicant might know that question.
Okay. Also, it strikes me that they're moving the dumpster closer to the residence on Brook Street. Is that something that staff recommended, or is there a reason for that, to your knowledge?
That was the applicant's proposal, and I don't know if it's, probably has something to do with access to it, so they can probably answer that question in their part of the presentation.
Thank you. No other questions.
Carolyn, thank you for your presentation. Just real quick, has the applicant developed or devised a parking plan yet, or is that contingent upon whatever council's action is on today?
I think Vernon, Mr. Geddy, can talk about that during his presentation on the parking plan. I think they're trying to address that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ms. Murphy, is there room to put the fence in and still retain the parking?
It's my understanding that parking, especially on the right-hand side and along the left-hand side, it's almost to the property line. On the left-hand side, there is an existing fence, so it's hard to, especially on the right-hand side, you have to remove some of the parking to be able to get that fence in and some landscaping in, and that was the area that the Architectural Review Board thought it was important to help screen the fencing to make it fit in with Richmond Road and the neighborhood.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, sir.
With that, we'll open the public hearing. The applicant would like to come forward and make a presentation, and I have, after that, a few speakers' cards, and then we will open it up to anybody else who would like to address council on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Vernon Geddy. It's my honor to be here today representing the William &amp; Mary Real Estate Foundation. I'd first like to thank your city staff for their hard work on this project. Carolyn, in particular, and Marvin have worked tirelessly, and we appreciate it. The Real Estate Foundation is a private, not-for-profit entity that exists for the benefit of the college. Its mission includes the purchase, development, and leasing of real estate for specific college purposes. The foundation developed the Tribe Square Project further down Richmond Road you're all familiar with. A number of representatives of the foundation in the college are here. Nancy Buchanan is the executive director of the foundation, is here. Sam Jones, who's the senior vice president for finance and administration at the college. As you know, William &amp; Mary is a national gem. It is one of the top public universities in the nation, and it's one of the institutions that makes Williamsburg what it is today. It is one of the largest employers in the area, and it is one of the economic engines that drives our local economy. The college is a public residential university within the state's system of higher education. College has long been committed to housing at least 75% of its undergraduates in college-operated housing. This is a commitment that's unique among public universities in the Commonwealth of Virginia. To meet this commitment, the college operates numerous residence halls of varying age and conditions at this point. The need for this project is driven by the college's need to undertake a significant renovation program of those residence halls. Individual dorms are taken offline for two summers and one academic year during the process. As Carolyn mentioned, the immediate need here is driven by the renovation of Landrum Hall during the next academic year. Landrum houses 225 students, and there is a critical need to renovate and update that dorm. The college does not want to force all 225 students out into the community into non-college housing, surrounding neighborhoods, given the potential impacts that would have on the community, and frankly, they would like to retain those students in the college housing program. Following Landrum, renovations are planned for the Green &amp; Gold Village and the Boditot Complex, both of which are multi-building complexes and will require multi-year renovation projects. The ability to house up to 180 students at Days Inn will significantly mitigate the impacts of the renovation program in the community. The college's plan for this coming year for the balance of the 45 students that could not be housed at Days Inn is to accommodate them by converting single rooms into doubles, primarily at one Tribe Place. As described in detail in our submission and in the staff report, the college expects the Days Inn would house a mix of primarily sophomores and juniors. It will be a college-operated residence hall in which students are subject to all regulations in the William &amp; Mary Student Handbook. The Code of Student Conduct will apply. The facility will be staffed with a head resident and five resident assistants. The RAs will be located throughout the facility, and they are trained to confront and document violations of rules and conduct that does not meet university standards. An RAA will be onsite and on duty from 6:30 PM to 6:30 AM each night. The RAs are also responsible for hall meetings at which all, at which time, all rules and regulations are reviewed, including requirements to adhere to city noise ordinance and all applicable laws regarding alcohol and drugs, as are tips and orientations for being a good neighbor, a program that's routinely given to students who live off-campus. As a college-operated facility, the William &amp; Mary Police Department will have jurisdiction over this facility. Chief Deb Cheesebro of the William &amp; Mary Police is here, and we're going to have her address you all briefly about their role and how they would police this project and the surrounding area. Chief Cheesebro has been chief of the college police since 2014. She was formerly deputy director of police and public safety at the University of Michigan and at the University of North Carolina School of Arts, where they did have a, probably 15 residence hall, one of which was located a mile off the main campus. She has a bachelor's and master's degrees and a PhD, and has extensive training in her field. So, Chief Cheesebro.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council, all those in attendance. Thank you for allowing me to make a few comments regarding the proposed safety and security measures of the property. I also want to thank members of the community for expressing their questions and concerns to us throughout these last weeks and months. Their voice definitely helped us in the process of assessing the safety and security needs as we look to develop this property. We want to be good neighbors in this endeavor, and so I see the police department and public safety role as critical to that, given the concerns that they have expressed. So let me just talk a little bit about our department and what we hope to accomplish with this property. The William &amp; Mary Police Department will have the jurisdiction over the Days Inn, as stated. We will also have William &amp; Mary Residence Life staff on property, as stated. And the William &amp; Mary Police Department and the Residence Life staff work hand-in-hand to make sure that we can manage student conduct issues, and that if there are specific things that arise spontaneously or enter into the realm of any kind of criminal activity, that they contact us immediately and that we deal with that in a collaborative fashion. So, behavior could go just to student code of conduct, or if it crosses into the criminal realm, it could land with the police department, and we would deal with that. And we would deal with that in a timely fashion. So William &amp; Mary police officers have the same training and police authority as all other officers, including that of arrest. In fact, when it comes to actually policing on a campus, our officers have more direct training when it comes to dealing with specifically college students in situations that are likely to occur. We provide police security and emergency communication services to all William &amp; Mary-owned or controlled property 24/7, 365 days a year. So we are always available to contact, to ask questions, express concerns, and respond. When we provide 24/7 police patrols, we will include this property in that process. And in that process, we will be driving to and from the Days Inn and patrolling completely around it, getting out of the car, walking through the property, talking with the residence hall staff that may be there at the time. And as we do that, we're not just securing the safety and security of that particular property, but we're also driving back and forth through the neighborhoods. So in effect, we're increasing the presence of law enforcement vehicles in the area, and we think that's a very positive byproduct of how we can take care of this property. If heightened activity occurs at the property, we will increase our patrols, as we do with any other residence hall or area on our campus. We constantly monitor for events, activities. We review anything that's occurred that, as I said, is a conduct or behavioral issue. So we will actually increase or adapt our measures, depending upon the activity that occurs, not just each year, but we do that on a day-to-day basis, which is why, you know, we like to have some flexibility in what we do and not have necessarily a set schedule. Because given the college community, a set schedule may actually miss some other peak times that we would want to provide some sort of presence or increased patrol. So it's important to note when we talk about patrols, and I think most folks in this room already know this, but I want to reinforce it, that the Williamsburg Police Department and the William &amp; Mary Police already work in a very collaborative fashion. We already exchange information between agencies, and we do that, again, on a daily basis. We assist each other when needed. They back us up, we back them up. We do things, some things in response, one after the other, as with the most recent incident we had on our campus, where they initiated action and we were able to come in and help complete it. And we also problem-solve situations together, especially those that have mutual impact, and we would see this property falling under that category of something that we would need to continue to deal with collaboratively. In fact, interim chief Barker has already reached out to me, and we have already discussed this property and how we might best coordinate our efforts to minimize and address any safety, security, or I think just as importantly, quality of life issues. Those conversations between us and our agencies will continue, and optimally, they would never end, as we always look for a continuous improvement process with all of our long-term safety and security needs for every property that we have. Other measures that we will take include designated liaison, community police officer, which was mentioned in the staff report, and that particular officer is assigned to that residence hall so that that officer gets to know not just the staff, the RAs, but also the students who live there. And that officer is responsible for helping us determine, you know, what coverage is needed at what time, also to help the RAs and the staff do programming, educational programming for the students, or informational programming, as it were. So, safety and security tips will be shared with all the students. They will have their own police officer that they can call if they have issues that they think fall under our purview. So that officer really invests in that particular residence hall, and that officer invests in those students. So they are very attentive to what kinds of needs may emerge that we will need to address as we go on with this project. Additionally, we have already provided and will continue to provide to the neighbors and community members surrounding the property a phone number that they can use 24/7 if they want to express a concern, ask a question. We will always have a dispatcher, and we typically have, in addition to that, three to four officers in the evenings that are available to respond to calls or to respond to somebody's question. So they'll always get the response, just as they would within the city. We are also trying to make sure that either myself or one of my designees would be available for neighborhood meetings, and we would like to have at least one per semester where we can attend and hear any of the concerns that they have so they can be addressed. I want to just say that, you know, that's something that I think is critical as a chief of police, is working with and communicating with our community, and I spend a lot of time doing that at William &amp; Mary. And I plan to do that with this neighborhood, this community, these individuals who have expressed their concerns. I make a sincere and genuine commitment to following through with them and making sure we can do everything we can to address the items that they have brought forth. So I pledge to be available. We will also continue to assess any of the security practices and technology that might help with the property and its safety. We have already talked with and reviewed and looked at the perimeter fencing, which will be an excellent security fencing. And we also have an outstanding access control system proposed. So again, thinking about security as systemic, that it's really the combination of the procedures, the staffing, the technology, the equipment, and you have to look at how that combines and comes through with a much better situation for safety and security of the students. As I said, I, or as I was introduced, it was said that I had a campus building like this, a residence hall, at my last chief's position, nine years there, and it was a mile and a half away, it was in a residential area, we had a similar kind of fence, a similar kind of access control system, we had the patrols, we have the system that I'm talking about in place, residence hall people, and it worked very, very effectively. And I really see, I'm incredibly optimistic, that this is really going to work out much better than perhaps some people are fearful of, because we are dedicated to making this work. So we will also maintain our relationship with the Residence Life staff and the RAs to manage conduct and behaviors. They are trained, the Residence Life staff, to deal with student management issues, and as it is every single day, we're in communications with them now from other residence halls and other areas, and it works. You know, there is a perfect combination, I think, of prevention, response, and staff training. So I really can't more strongly tell you that I have every confidence in the kind of system that we have set up. What I do describe to you is this systemic approach, and it is to all university housing, not just to this particular residence hall. So we do have a lot of experience with this. William &amp; Mary and the city have the right professionals and the right partnerships in place to establish, coordinate, maintain, and adjust safety and security measures as needed. So on a continuing basis, I will continue to pledge to work with the neighbors and with Chief Barker and the rest of the Williamsburg Police Department to make this work the best for everybody and to, more importantly, keep all of our students and all of our community members safe, because that's what we really need to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We just want to reiterate that the college, and obviously Chief Cheesebro, is committed to working with your police department now, when you're to working with your police department now, when your new chief comes aboard, to keep this a coordinated effort. And we wanted to go through this detail because I think it demonstrates the significant degree of control present in college-operated student housing, as opposed to students living off-campus in rental units. William &amp; Mary has the full range of college discipline processes and procedures, plus the police presence you've just heard about, in dealing with issues in an appropriate manner. We are very confident the students will be kept safe and of good behavior without the need for additional security guards being stationed at this site. The applicant has submitted information detailing the projected parking demand for this project. Based on its long experience with stu- with its student parking program, the college projects 100 students living here will have cars. Being very conservative, they project 60 of the 180 students would be sophomores who aren't permitted to have cars. Their experiences of the remaining students, about 80% of their students have cars. So they project 100 is the number. On-site, given the changes in the landscaping and fences you see, we're projecting there will be 75 to 80 spaces when all said and done. Any demand in excess of that will be met either in the Caplin Arena Lot, which has 622 spaces, or the School of Education Lot, that has 240 spaces, and both of which were an easy walking distance of this facility. This is very comparable to any other dorm or Residence Hall on campus, or the Tribe Square Project, where there's actually no student parking. We agree with Carolyn's analysis that this proposal is substantially in accordance with the city's comprehensive plans. One of the central themes running through that plan for many years has been the preservation of the single-family detached neighborhoods in the city by limiting the number of students in rental properties in them. We believe this proposal helps accomplish that goal, and frankly, will help prevent or mitigate many of the issues we are hearing from the neighbors on Motoka Court. It would also result in the reduction of the number of dated motel-style hotel rooms in the city. We recognize that this is not a perfect solution or application. Unfortunately, there is no such thing. College is sensitive to the concerns from the neighbors. It hosted a neighborhood meeting, there have been any number of individual meetings and discussions with neighbors, we've read the correspondence, we've seen just yesterday the list of proposals submitted by neighbors relative to this project. The college is committed to open lines of communication in assessing the true impacts from this proposal. The college already participates in the Neighborhood Relations Committee, suggests that with a broader community representation, that committee is an appropriate forum for it to participate with the city and the neighbors in monitoring any impacts from this proposal. We suggest the first semester of operation of the facility be closely monitored, and impacts such as trash in the neighborhood be assessed. William &amp; Mary will ensure the Days Inn site itself will be clean and free of trash, but if additional trash results along Richmond Road, College Terrace, Brook Street, Dillard Street, due to students residing at Days Inn, William &amp; Mary will take appropriate action. In short, the college will do all it can reasonably do to ensure this facility and its residents are good neighbors, and will take reasonable steps to address any issues that do arise. You'll recall the great fear and trepidation in the community when the college has proposed projects on the perimeter of campus in the past, such as the Jamestown Road Dorms, the Mason School, or recently, the lights on the stadium. In each of these cases, the college did what it said it would do, and the feared negative impacts did not materialize. An example of this cooperative relationship also occurred at One Tribe Place. Dave Cranbule and Joe Herzler met with Jeremy Martin from the president's office and expressed concerns about landscaping and bike racks in the front circle at One Tribe Place. They met on-site, looked at the issue, and it was quickly resolved in a manner satisfactory to all. Remember, it is also in the college's best interests that the surrounding neighborhoods remain attractive, livable, and vibrant. The college and the city have developed an excellent and cooperative working relationship. College is committed to continuing that relationship going forward, including by participating in planning efforts for the Midtown Planning Area and in the city's upcoming comprehensive plan review and update. College and the foundation made the conscious decision to do this project through the Real Estate Foundation, voluntarily subjecting themselves to this city zoning process, and to do so in cooperation and partnership with the city. I believe the fundamental question here is this: Is the city as a whole better off with these 180 students housed under the supervision and control of the college at Days Inn, or these students being pushed out into the community? Carolyn notes with the potential of that creating demand for 60 additional residential property in neighborhoods near the college. We submit to you the city is better off with this project. There are several conditions in the different recommendations floating around before you, so I did want to take a second to go through those, if nothing else, for the sake of clarity. First and foremost, the application before you requests a maximum occupancy of 180 students, and that's the figure we would ask you to act upon. Similarly, the applicant has agreed to a 10-year sunset provision, and again, we would ask you to act on that. We believe any condition related to the location of fences is no longer necessary with the plan up before you. That was unanimously approved and enthusiastically, I would say, by the Architectural Review Board. What that plan shows is a four-foot low wall on the, right on the sidewalk, with landscaping behind it. On the right-hand side, there's the the fence that's been described with the brick pillars and metal fence in between that's pushed up right to the property line. The landscaping is behind the fence on the Days Inn side, if you will. Very similar to what's been done at Alumni House. That's desirable for several reasons. It's aesthetically pleasing, the fence sort of melts into the landscaping behind it, and it's also preferable for security reasons to not have a lot of landscaping outside the fence where people can congregate. On the Montessori School side, the same would be true up until where the Montessori School privacy fence starts, and from there, we would propose a wooden privacy fence along that side in the back of the property. So we think that has been very well addressed, and I would submit to you that when this is constructed, there'll be an immediate improvement in the appearance of the property. We do not believe a condition related to an on-site security guard is necessary, given the head resident, the RAs, and the William &amp; Mary Police presence, as you've heard from Chief Chief Cheeseborough. We agree with conditions 4, 5, 7 from the Planning Commission. With respect to parking, our only suggestion would be that the city manager and/or his staff be given the authority to approve any parking arrangements. We think that's entirely within their wheelhouse, and as much as we love coming before you all, I'm not sure that the parking plan is, is the appropriate form. So, with that, and again, seeking 180-student minimum, we would respectfully ask for your approval of this project, and we would be glad to answer any questions. We believe it's in the best interest of the community and the college.
Any questions at this moment for Mr. Getty?
I have a question regarding the police, William &amp; Mary Police. Chief Cheeseborough said that the William &amp; Mary Police would be patrolling to and from campus and to the Days Inn. Do they have the authority to stop students that are misbehaving in between, like in the neighborhoods?
Neighborhoods are within the jurisdiction of the city police.
Okay, so even so even though they're back and forth.
There would be a presence that would be a deterrent. If they saw something, I think it's a quick call to the city police.
Thank you, Mr. Getty.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, we'll reserve the right to call you back a little later.
I would expect nothing less.
Thank you, sir. I have three speakers' cards on this matter, and after that, we'll open the floor to anybody else who would like to speak. The first is from Joe Herzler, 605 College Terrace. Good afternoon, Mr. Herzler.
Thank you, Mary Friling, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you and speak to you. Yesterday, I submitted a letter that has been prepared by residents in the area, and rather than going through and reading that to you, which I'm sure you don't need, I just thought I'd talk a little bit about where the letter came from and sort of the the thought process behind it. The college reached out to several of us in the community and said, you know, give us some feedback, let us find, let us know what the concerns are. So we did, we went to work, and a number of letters started to generate, we started, we had a number of meetings on these things. And we sort of felt like maybe we should come up with a way of of pulling this together. And that's where the letter came from. We attempted to come up with something that sort of stated the general sentiment in the in the neighborhoods, put that down in a concise format for you guys to to have in front of you. I think that kind of thing is extremely important. These sort of grassroots knowledge can be very instructive. What are people actually experiencing in the neighborhoods? What are they seeing? What what's going on? And turn that into something that we can hopefully turn into some recommendations. So, I was looking for a way to try to make this a positive, a, for lack of a better term, a win-win, something that would actually end up doing good for the neighbors. There's a lot of neighbors who disagree that there is any good to come out of this, and you're probably getting ready to get hit with a tidal wave of those people saying that. A lot of people believe it's bad, shut it down, now, no questions asked. But if you do move forward, what we try to do is come up with some recommendations. And I think the biggest issue is that it's not what goes on on the site itself, but what goes on surrounding the site. The site itself is going to be really buttoned down. It's going to be clean, it's going to be well-maintained, it's going to be well-policed. They've they've got a very good plan for what's going on inside of the property itself. The issue before you guys is what goes on around it. And that's where I would really ask you to be proactive, not reactive. Don't just wait till we see a problem and then we'll come up with an answer to it. Deal with it now. Get that commitment upfront going into this thing. Let's be proactive, not reactive, as we move forward. And speaking of that, and you might say, well, this is being reactive. Let's put together a task force. I would ask that city council direct the city manager to put some type of task force in place. The the suggestion was maybe the neighborhood council would be something that'd be good enough, that it's an existing entity already. Perhaps that's good, but really, pay attention to what's going on with this project and start to track it over time. And really see, are we having a a positive impact? Are we having a negative impact? What needs to be done? Let's get serious about following up with this. So be proactive in the beginning, going into this thing now, let's be proactive, and then let's follow through with it. I think if you do that, we do have a really good chance of of having a good project here. The sunset clause, keeping the college involved in the conversation, is going to be absolutely essential. And perhaps 10 years from now, we've had something that's good that's come out of this, and, you know, we'll be up here, very different story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herzler. And I was remiss in mentioning that we request that those folks making comments, limit those comments to five minutes. So, Mr. Herzler, thank you very much for not forcing me to raise that during your remarks. The next speaker's card we have is from Robert Casey, 721 Richmond Road.
Welcome, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Robert Casey, I live at 721 Richmond Road. It's interesting, there's a side comment that's called the Midtown. When I was growing up, the city limits ended in my front yard. Shows you how things have changed over the years. All of us, I think, who are part of the community are greatly in favor of the college, and we like what the college does as a whole. But the college can make mistakes, and we can make mistakes. And I'd like to make a suggestion that way to, the thing that concerns me, at least, is the sunset provision, you know? It's 10 years out, all the damage that we've done, that will have, all the damage that will have occurred, and it won't be, you won't be able to recover that damage. I would suggest that the council not vote on this matter today, and that they use as good officers to encourage the college to negotiate a lease purchase agreement with the owners, where the college would lease it for, say, three years, and have an option to purchase at the end of three years. And two years after two years, city could evaluate whether or not things are working as they ought to be working. Seems to me that that would be a way of not, you know, get rid of the uncertainty that goes along with this whole deal for the whole time that we're talking about. To have all these people, all the college students in the dormitories, is really an urban intense influx in the community. I was thinking that there's a house below me, the city has long tried not to keep, keep housing so it's not too overoccupied. Two doors below me, there's a house with 12 rooms, seven bedrooms, it's limited to four people. Could easily take care of 14 people. If you used the college as, if you used the density by acreage, that lot would be entitled to 52 people. I figured out, I think, is that right? There's a whole field across the road from the, from the hotel, from the Days Inn. And if the owners of that field like to use the same density as the college is getting, we could, they could have somewhere between 900 and 1,000, take care of 900 and 1,000 people. It's a huge increase in the density of that area. So just something to think about. But I do think that the idea of of a lease purchase agreement would be a way of knowing whether or not things would work out, and if it did work out, it'd be fine, if it didn't work out, they have a right to change things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Next speaker's card is Mr. Henry Coleman, 606 College Terrace. Welcome, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much for giving me this time to make a few observations. Number one being, this is a request for an exception in our Planning Commission, our comprehensive plan. I think that in itself needs to be looked at very carefully, because obviously, this is not something we had planned to have happening. And this structure or in this area on Richmond Road, we are reducing the amount of commercial property available in the city of Williamsburg by this act. We have already accreased to a major piece of property bought by the college, turned into a dormitory, which costs the city property tax, meal tax, room tax, and as it turns out, that the building is not really quite what it should have been because they now have to tear off an addition, which I believe has about 100 rooms. That was most unfortunate, however. I don't see that it, it's up to the citizens of Williamsburg to provide that extra housing by cutting off another commercial property. For many years, the city has worked hard to try to preserve the single-family neighborhoods in Williamsburg, and particularly, the properties adjacent to the college. in Williamsburg, and particularly, the properties adjacent to the college, which, believe it or not, are considered very desirable areas to live in. Recently, we have seen this desire to keep this property in this area of town, good residential housing. Between Virginia Avenue and Nelson Avenue, over the last few years, we have seen, I believe, in our five structures that have been purchased at a very good price and a substantial amount of money in updating these houses as single-family residents. What is this going to impact on this particular project? We know that we are going to have an increase in car traffic. We know we're going to have an increase in walking traffic. And we already know what the college says it's going to do. It is going to do what it has been doing forever and a day. They have handbooks. We read those handbooks. I read those handbooks when I was an undergraduate at William &amp; Mary. I'm very familiar with them. And like all handbooks and goodwill, we're still people. And it is amazing how quickly we can forget. We are responsible for our actions, sometimes actions which are very detrimental to raising Development of this property now will roll into the hands, basically, control of the college for at least 10 years. And as I believe was just stated, we will find that the damage that is going to do will have been done by the end of that 10 years. People who live there have found that with the purchase of the hospitality house, the amount of traffic has substantially increased. Worse than that, however, is the accompanying sounds that come with this extra foot traffic and automobile traffic in the evenings. There are children, actually, who do live in this neighborhood. There are children who find their sleep is interrupted, and it's not interrupted by people walking down the street talking. It is interrupted by very loud verbal joy, anger, having too much to drink, singing. It is disruptive to a family life. The city, I think, needs to make a stand. And I think that stand is not against the college, for goodness knows. It is a reciprocal agreement. The college is here. The college has had this need to refurbish their dormitories for a very long time. They know that is a problem. Why did they not look forward just a little bit, instead of relinquishing that eastern state property? Could have housed all of these extra students out there. And I know we're going to be told, "Well, they didn't want to go that far."
Mr. Coleman, your time is up. If you wouldn't...
I thought that you were going to say that to me.
I'm trying to be polite about it.
But I'd like to have a third of the time that the presenters had, or a quarter of I would like to just wrap up with this comment. I have lived in College Terrace since 1980. I have seen students come, and I have seen students go. Good students. I will certainly adhere to that. I taught them. They were wonderful people. I had wonderful students. It was a great experience. However, they are not always responsible for their actions. When Thursday comes, it's almost holiday time, and Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday. It's not the morning, and it's not the mid-afternoon times. It is the evening times. And the people who live on Richmond Road and have the foot traffic that has increased down Randolph Street have found it has made their living not very good.
Mr. Coleman, I'm sorry.
As a citizen, I would like to say that if I were looking for property to buy right now, the city in the middle of Williamsburg, and I found out that we're going to put 180 students...
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to stop. If you'd like to come back after the other folks have had a chance to speak, we'd be happy to hear the rest of your comments.
It is a pincer. It's a two-way street. The city is given and given. It is, mother may I, even when they know what they're doing, they've got to bend the rules to do it. Please forgive me for knowing not what I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I do not have any more speakers' cards. I do not have any more speakers' cards. If anybody else would like to address this issue, you can come forward one at a time. Mr. Kaiser is up first. Ms. Vence Guerra next. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. We can hear some more comments after everybody's had a chance to speak, but in order to give each person an opportunity, I respectfully ask that you keep the comments to five minutes. Welcome, Mr. Kaiser.
My name is Dennis Kaiser. I live at 123 Matoka Court. And there were several flaws that I heard, but the thing that gets to me the most is the words "NRC," those letters. That committee has been a very frustrating, kick-the-can type of thing for people in the city or the college to say, "Well, that's an NRC issue. Let them handle it." Well, in our first two years of living here, we had 29 meetings with people at the college, the NRC, members of council, and things like that, and everything was always just kick it down the road. So, if whatever y'all do, please do not let the NRC be the solution. Well, we have the NRC, and if there's problems, y'all can handle that with the NRC, because the NRC has no jurisdiction, no authority, and it has been an ultimate frustration to my wife and I to say, "Well, let the NRC handle that." So, I agree with a lot of the things that were said here, and 180 students, as y'all know, from a density standpoint, is, what, three times the amount of density that's allowed, even with a special use permit? So, if a regular developer came here... Derek, could you give me that thing? If a regular developer came here and said, "I want to do something that's three times the amount of density that is allowed," it just wouldn't be allowed. I think y'all may recall this.
If you could keep it to microphone.
I think y'all may recall this.
And if you could keep addressing council, please?
This was something I prepared for the site next door. And I prepared this with the density that was allowed. Now, you know, between myself and Jack Tuttle, we could never get an agreement. But if I had known that I could do three times the amount of density, there was a lot of things I could have done to develop the property next door. So, I just don't think that one of the more wealthier clients in town gets to come and gets that type of density, whereas private developers cannot get that type of density. So, the density's too much. 180 students there is just out of the question, and the NRC is not a solution, nor has the We Mery Police been beneficial to people on Matoka Court. So, that's nine years of experience.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Ms. Vence Guerra?
Hi, my name is Lucy Vence Guerra. I live at 727 Richmond Road. I've been there for 34 years. I realize that the college believes this is an ideal location because of easy access to the campus. However, the students do not limit themselves to the campus alone. Currently, there are frequently students who walk along Richmond Road at night, who even in small groups are quite noisy. I'm sure they're not intentionally so. They just do not realize how far their voices carry at night. They have probably been to the taverns down the road, Paul's, the Greenleaf College Deli, et cetera, and are in a jovial mood, laughing and having a good time. But for those of us who like to leave our windows open in nice weather, this can be quite disruptive. There are currently not that many, just a few groups at night, those who can walk home to their residences further up Richmond Road. However, if the current motel, just a few blocks from the night spots, were to house up to 180 students, or even just the 80 that the planning commission recommended, imagine how many would be noisily coming home then, because it's just so easy to walk there. Even were they instructed to be good neighbors, this would not help. They're not trying to be loud. They just have no concept of what they sound like to people trying to enjoy a quiet evening at home, or even how their convivial outside voices can wake people up. This affects not only the residents, but guests at the many bed and breakfast, excuse me, bed and breakfasts along the route. Due to the location of my house, I also have to contend with those who walk through Casey Field and noisily use the open area to play football, golf, frisbee, softball, or have picnics. I have had them walk through my yard, chasing stray balls, taking shortcuts to and from Lafayette Street, and I hear them complain that the city should keep the grass mowed low enough for them to find their golf balls. They think of the field as public property. It's impossible to enjoy a quiet day in my backyard. And my upstairs neighbor has been forced to flag her garden with long streamers in an effort to keep drunken students from staggering into and damaging the fence yet again. Now imagine how many students would be treating this as a public park if there were a dormitory directly across the street. No matter how many residential managers were in place to supervise students in the proposed dormitory, this would do nothing to control the behavior of the students on their way to and from the dormitory, or their recreation outside. And for these reasons, I strongly disapprove of the zoning change and the SUP for this property. And I would also like to state that, as a renter, I don't ever get any communications about what's going on in the neighborhood or from the college. I just see the public, the announcement of the public hearing in the newspaper. And I would request that council and whoever is in charge of this, and also people in my neighborhood, if you are going to have meetings, please include me. I've been there for 34 years. I don't feel like a renter. I'd love to buy the property, and I can't. But thank you for allowing me to make my comments.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward and address council? Mr. Guerra?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Guerra. I live at 325 Burns Lane. We've been city residents now for just over two years, but my wife and I lived for over 22 years in James City County, so we made a conscious decision to move to the city and to become residents here and to raise our three kids here. I'm not anxious to be up here speaking, but I'm not directly affected by the decision that will be made today, but certainly indirectly affected. And I care very deeply about my college. I care very deeply about our city. I care very deeply about my neighbors as well, and of course, my own family. So, I feel compelled to speak. I bring some experience to this and some knowledge, having been a teacher in the local community. I was principal of the two-city schools, so to speak, James Blair and Berkeley Middle School. I know a thing or two about facilities and facilities design and use as well, having written the original high school options study. Some of you may remember way back when, when we decided to build a second high school in this community. And we took a long time to make that decision, and a long time to decide how big our high schools would be back in the early 90s. I think this decision is an intelligent, strategic, savvy, even nimble move by the college. And those words I choose pointedly, the good thinkers over there. But I don't think it's a wise move for several reasons, many of which have been stated already. It requires a change in the ordinances for density. It requires a change in the use designation. It requires a new definition in the ordinance for a dormitory. It results in lost revenue for the city. It does not preserve and protect, and I am quoting our comprehensive plan, the residential neighborhoods. It is not part of the long-range vision for the city. It's not even part of the long-range vision for the college. In fact, the long-range vision of the college has more to do with this, building out the School of Education campus site. There is room over there. And even considering the use of North College Woods for residential use possibly. It's not a good decision for the college. Having inherited a plan for the renovation of Berkeley and then becoming principal, I can tell you, it's not wise to shove too many kids into a building that's just not designed for that many people. It's a bad idea to do that. I believe that you all have in front of you four choices. One is you can vote against this. Two is that you could vote to table it and to work with the college to devise a better solution that's both a near-term solution and a long-range solution. I think a third possible decision is to support it, but to take the advice of the duly-appointed, very wise, responsible members of the planning commission, and make decisions such as to limit the density, to put a sunset clause on it, and to put in place serious practical requirements to mitigate what I would call the downstream effects of this decision. Downstream effects being the impact on the local neighborhoods. Your fourth decision, I think, could be to vote for it. But I think if you do that, you turn your back on the comprehensive plan, you turn your back on the planning commission, you turn your back on residents of the city. This isn't a multiple-choice test, so I don't think it's A, B, C, D. There's a fifth option, possibly, but I don't know what that fifth option is. Perhaps you have a fifth option in mind. But I do fundamentally believe this. We are a community of very bright, very educated, very principled, very caring people, a whole community of us. We're all hardworking. I believe that we can do better than this particular solution. I think it's a short-sighted solution to what is really a long-term and persistent issue. If you do decide to approve it in some way, shape, or form, the impact must be mitigated. And I choose that language pointedly as well. My home that I purchased on Burns Lane is 100% within the ordinance of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. And that reads in part that "A healthy state, local economies, and a healthy bay are integrally related." And I fundamentally believe that. I'll just change some of the language. "A world-class liberal arts university, a vibrant local economy, and a healthy quality of life for permanent residents are integrally related." If I wanted to build a retaining wall on my property, because my property butts up to the old Indian Springs, and I have a creek behind me, and I have some erosion issues, if I wanted to build a retaining wall, I would have to mitigate the effects by law. Those mitigation steps would not be for my benefit. They would be for the benefit of the people downstream. That's the idea behind the Chesapeake Bay ordinance. I believe that if you make a decision to support this in some way, shape, or form, the college must take new efforts to mitigate the downstream effect on Richmond Road, on Brooks, on College Terrace, on Matoka, and the other streets and neighborhoods that will be affected. The provisions for this new campus, I think, are in place. I'm not concerned so much about that footprint there. What I am more concerned about is what would happen between that space and campus, as has been mentioned several times. I have two suggestions. One has to do with people, and one has to do with property itself. I believe that there needs to be a clear, more consistent message through orientation, through example, through direct teaching, through guidance, through intervention, and when need be, through enforcement, that the expectations for on-campus behavior and off-campus behavior are the same. I believe that when we say that the student code of conduct should extend and that we're educating whole students, we should put some teeth behind that. We should put some meaning behind that. And when I say "we," I include myself as a faculty member at the college.
Mr. Guerra, if I could ask you to please wrap up.
Thank you. I will wrap it up then. I believe that ensuring the safety, the sense of community, and a sense of honor are important with our students. And I think that the college can do a good job of helping students to understand that those expectations for behavior do extend. As a final point, then, I would ask this. As an illustrative picture, if you drive onto campus on a Saturday morning or a Sunday morning, or it could even be on a Friday morning or a Thursday morning, depending on what the kids are up to, and you drive down what I call "Fraternity Row," you'd be amazed at how clean it is on a morning after a party night. It's beautiful. It is a pristine campus. In fact, President Reilly says that William &amp; Mary, our cherished traditions, like the exquisite beauty of our campus. It's a hallowed place. I would suggest that the instructive example would be that if this goes through in some way, shape, or form, that Matoka Court looks as pristine and beautiful as Fraternity Row on a Saturday morning. And that in part is what I think the letter from the community members is stating, is then let's have some help, some real help, in helping the students to understand what it does mean to be a college student, a resident of three years or four years in this community, and then what it means to take care of a campus, recognizing that our very city is a kind of campus. I don't envy the decision that you have in front of you. I know it's not easy to make these kinds of decisions, but again, I'll say, I think that we're a community of bright, intelligent, caring, committed individuals, and I think that we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council on this matter? Mr. Blueay?
Hello. I'm Brian Blueay from 131 Chandler Court, and I'm representing Chandler Court. I'm sure it's been a great relief to us all to hear that we're going to establish a surveillance state on Richmond Road. And we're all happy to hear, as Mr. Greddy told us, that the college will listen to citizens' concerns. I hope they'll take on board the business...
Mr. Blueay, if you could address council, please.
Sorry?
If you could address council, please. If you could keep speaking into the microphone.
All right. Take on board the concerns that many people living around the college have concerning the demolition of houses on Jamestown Road, which has been approved by the Board of Visitors. And I come to this now to the larger issue, which is the interface of the college to the surrounding neighborhoods. You've heard from College Terrace, you've heard from McCota Court, you've heard from Richmond Road, you've heard from Burns Lane, you've heard from Chandler Court. We're all concerned about this issue of what's sometimes referred to as "college creep." And I think it's the bigger issue that you should be thinking about in the context of this proposal in front of you, because I don't think the issue is going to die down. We on Chandler Court are under threat, and Pollard Park are under threat, again approved by the Board of Visitors, to have a parking garage erected beside the historic district, because Chandler Court and Pollard Park designated historic district, not only statewide but federally. At finish, as an academic, and I teach the college, then it's quite obvious that single-study bedrooms provide a much better learning environment for students than packing them into, two at a time, into a motel room. Thank you for your concern.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to address council? Please.
I'm Sam Jones, and I'm the Senior Vice President for Finance and Administration at William &amp; Mary. Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, first, again, as Vernon did, let me thank you and city staff for all of the time and effort that y'all have put into this. Not only the time that you've put in today, but all of the letters and comments and meetings that you've had offline to be fully informed about this. And so, we really appreciate the fact that you had put that much effort into evaluating the proposal we have to repurpose the Days Inn. We recognize that repurposing an existing commercial facility brings with it issues, and it raises issues both for the city and for the community. I think we've been very transparent about that, we've been very transparent about what we, as the college, are trying to do. And frankly, I will tell you, I've learned quite a bit about the process as we've gone through it. Typically, as a college entity, we do not go through this process, and so we don't have quite as much discussion about things as we have had about this particular project. Vernon and the chief have outlined our approach to dealing with the various issues that's been raised. I can only echo our commitment to operating the facility in a responsible way while continuing to assess the impact on the community. That's a commitment that we, as a university and the Real Estate Foundation, will make to you, and with that commitment, I would ask that you go ahead and approve this as we've requested. William &amp; Mary and the Real Estate Foundation are committed to a project that while meeting our immediate needs, also allows for future planning about what should happen on this site and the surrounding area. That's why our agreement to the idea of having a sunset provision at 10 years that allows us to come back and do that. We think that that consideration for future uses will allow us to be active participants in the comprehensive planning update that you do, as well as any long-term planning that you're doing for the whole midtown area. We look forward and committed to being active participants with you as the city, the college, and the citizens here in the local communities, to making sure that that long-term planning effort for this site, as well as the area around the college and this part of the city, is successful. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Bill Tally, and I live at 709 College Terrace. I also spent a number of years on the Neighborhood Relations Committee, and I do appreciate the frustrations that was previously talked about, because that committee didn't have the power that it really needed to have. So I'm not in favor of them being the policemen of this issue, all right? You've seen the letter that was sent to you from all the residents, so we won't have to go over that. I understand this is an emotional issue, but let's take emotions out of it, and let's deal with facts. First of all, three bed and breakfasts that are in the vicinity of this proposal no longer exist. Why? One of the things that we heard on the Neighborhood Relations Committee was the guests complaining at noise at 3:00 in the morning. That's taxes that are now gone. I don't see that coming back. A lot of neighbors in our neighborhood have had their property vandalized, myself included. One of the things we've talked about, I really appreciate hearing Chief Chiozzi Burrows' comments about policing the Days Inn. I have no idea that that will even be a problem. What is the problem is the area between and the adjoining neighborhoods. We all know what the city police staffing is, and I know how long it takes them to get there, and a lot of times, when we're disrupted at 3:00 in the morning for noise or vandalism, the people are gone before the police get there. So that needs to be addressed. Illegal parking continues. I've had students knocking on my door wanting to buy a guest tag to park in front of my house. Parking enforcement seems to be very lax nowadays. We have had meetings with the college, and I do appreciate them inviting us for meetings. But I'm not quite seeing the same rosy picture that was painted. When we brought these concerns up to the college administration, I quote, "You live by a college. You don't like it? Move." Unquote. So that may give you some idea of some of the things that we're having to deal with. I understand the density. 180 is a lot, all right? And 180 is something that's unprecedented in an LB2. I ask you this question. If you allow this, are you opening a door that you can't close? If another developer comes in and wants to do the same thing, you deny them? You might have a lawsuit on your hands, because that would be allowing one party and not allowing another, all right? The other thing is, as you start putting the pressure on the neighborhoods, and nobody's denying that, in our neighborhood right now, in the vicinity of this property, 30% of the houses are either for sale or soon will be. As you start pressuring these type of sales, the prices go down, and as the prices go down, then it becomes attractive to become rentals. Now, I understand a 10-year sunset clause, okay? But I have to agree with one of the statements that's made. 10 years is going to be too long. By then, it's going to be too late for these neighborhoods. You already have some neighborhoods like Matoka Court and Harrison Street that are largely and mostly rentals. What about the other neighborhoods? You want them to follow? I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Anybody else? Mr. Coleman, in case anybody's trying to muster up the courage to come forward, if you'd like a few more minutes, we'd welcome you to come back.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you on this issue. My name is Ron Thompson, I live at 213 Matoka Court. I've been there approximately 15 years. I love Matoka, I love living near the college, and I actually enjoy my student neighbors that we have on our street. It's been a good experience for a lot of people. But there's also been some downsides. The difficulty I have is kind of a nuts-and-bolts thing, is I've been days in at the corner of Matoka and Richmond, almost at the corner, and I've been to the, actually walked the Days Inn property many times, and the estimate of having up to 80 parking spaces available for students is a canard. There's not a chance that you can fit that many parking spaces in. Mr. Pons addressed that early on when he said, if the fencing on the right side of the Inn is pushed back five feet, as is planned, what's going to happen with those spaces? They're going to be gone, and you can barely fit cars in there now. The difficulty we've had on Matoka Court particularly over the years has been traffic. Foot traffic, car traffic, student traffic at night. To get back and forth between campus and everything on Richmond Road, students have to traverse our area. Just two weeks ago, and we have all kinds of issues that we could bring up from the neighborhoods that have happened in the past, but guys were going by. My house lighting fireworks at night after midnight, there was a house, two houses down, a rental house, they were having an out-of-control party. I went out to see if I could do anything, there were too many people, so I had to call the police. The difficulty with this project is, they had said in the original plan, number one, they didn't even address bike racks in the original plan, which have to be there for 180 students who live so far from the main parts of campus. Also, I actually counted the spaces that were actually viable, and I counted up to maybe 80 spaces now. Well, they said there would be 35 spaces addressed for staff, policing, housekeepers, et cetera, that the students could park at. So what do you do when you subtract those? Where are the family members going to go? Where are the visitors, all these 180 adults, going to go when they can't find parking at night and they want to visit their friends? They're going to go to Matoka Court, they're going to drop off their cars, as they have been in the past. And there is no police parking enforcement at night. It was stated by one of the foundation members, "Oh, we're going to have parking at the education center, we're going to have parking at William &amp; Mary Hall." Well, to get back and forth between the education center at night, they're going to have to walk down Matoka Court. We've had all kinds of issues with students walking down after midnight, after they get back from whatever they happen to be doing, and as one nice lady addressed, the noise is untenable, because they don't know that they're making the kind of noise that they're making. We've lost five Matoka Court signs to students in the past two years, because they were drunk at night and they decided the signs would be a nice memento to keep with them. I get emotional when I think about this issue. So the things that the college hasn't addressed, or the foundation hasn't addressed, is the fact that there's not enough parking. Where are those people going to go? How are we going to make sure that they don't go to College Terrace, or Matoka, or Shirley, or the other streets at night and drop off their cars there? They had addressed in the original proposals, I recall, that they invited the city to participate with them in setting up a bus stop there, which would be a great idea, because the closest bus area discovered nearby is at Food Line, in front of Food Line. Well, 180 students aren't going to be going at night if they have a chance to take a car or go with friends somewhere, they're not going to walk up to Food Line. So I had proposed, and I recommend, that the city hold the college to it and have them, if you approve this measure, foot the bill for a college bus stop in front of the area, so that some of that foot traffic at night, that the students who live there become comfortable with the idea of using the bus instead of walking down Matoka, or biking down Matoka, or taking their cars out at night. But I really wish you all would address the parking issue. I can't even see more than 30 spaces being available to the actual people who live there. Where are they all going to go? Where are their friends going to go, et cetera? And where's the traffic going to go? And what do you do for all the Matoka Court neighbors who are here at night, when they have people parking in front of their house and slamming doors and throwing beer cans in their yards? What are you going to do? So that's my recommendation to you, and I thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Hertzler? You have a minute left from your original five.
I just wanted to amplify one comment that's been brought up. One of the recommendations put forward by the neighbors is to establish a task force. And the point of that is a follow-up mechanism to make sure that things are happening. The suggestion was made, use the Neighborhood Relations Committee. Mr. Kaiser has talked about some of the frustration there, of it essentially being ineffective. For this thing to work, you guys have got to give the task force, the committee, whatever it is, some kind of teeth. This thing has got to be not just a place to air grievances, but to actually get some action. And that's one thing I would really strongly emphasize to you.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzler. Last call. With that, we will close the public hearing, come back to council for discussion, questions, and action. Skip you, Mr. Foster. Ms. Ramsey?
Well, I guess I get to be the lucky one to go first.
And if you have other questions, too, feel free to ask staff.
No, I think that staff has done a remarkable job putting all of this together, and I thank Carolyn and her staff, and what the Planning Commission has already worked through to look at this application for William &amp; Mary's conversion of the Days Inn to a dormitory. I'd also like to thank the permanent residents who live in the neighborhood and the college for the outreach to city council and staff on the discussion of all of these topics. I've often said that Williamsburg is a unique community with city, college, and CW composition, and it's very important to have cooperation, collaboration, and partnerships among all of the many members of the community. And as we've heard today, I don't think there's going to be an easy answer on any of this. I don't think that people, one way or the other, are going to be pleased with really any of the options that are out there. I am grateful to the college for trying to maintain a residential campus. I don't think that people realize how unique this is in the higher educational world today. Anecdotally, I was in Charleston this past weekend, and of their 10,000-plus students, only 30% live on campus, if you can even find where the campus is. The same practice is normal for other Virginia colleges. And a residential campus brings value to the college experience, but it does come with challenges, as we have experienced and are experiencing now. Old dormitories need to be updated, and I'm glad that William &amp; Mary has a program in place to upgrade these dormitories. It helps maintain the desires by students to want to live on campus, and only as the dormitories are upgraded can we retain them wanting to live there. The importance of providing a safe environment with air conditioning and modern technology is necessary, and I feel that the same thing is providing a safe environment with the plans to add sprinkler systems to the Days Inn and to upgrade the wiring. It will really be a much safer place for any resident there than it has been in the past. Knowing that Landrum and other dormitories are going to go down for renovation, I recognize the need for students to be housed and to live elsewhere, and do not feel that dispersing those students into the neighborhoods en masse is a good idea for a number of reasons. And I have confidence that the college will work to house the students that will be displaced between the difference of what's going to go in the Days Inn and elsewhere. It's acknowledged that a dormitory at this location on Richmond Road may create some issues, and I recognize that ongoing conversations among the involved parties will be necessary. I believe the letter submitted to council and city staff is a good working document and opens the door for continued discussion. And as one resident commented, best practices at this location can become a model for other neighborhoods, whether it be through police patrols, parking enforcement, bus transportation, and escort services. I think a 10-year sunset clause is important and appropriate, particularly as we focus on the midtown area for revitalization. Our plan is for that area to, for increased housing and for student housing, and as we encourage growth in that area, there will be a shift. I think that the known benefits of the applicant's proposal are sufficient for me to support the conversion of the Days Inn... to support, the conversion of the Days Inn to a student dormitory in accordance with the special use permit, as far as the zoning that's been presented, the maximum of one hundred and eighty students and a ten-year sunset clause. To me, it's very key to this, that the property be purchased and retained in possession by the Real Estate Foundation, because I think that that provides us an opportunity for reuse and regrowth in this area. And I also believe that the recommendations by the city, our professional staff, as far as adding a text revision to the zoning, is the proper vehicle by which this is done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramsey.
I wish my thoughts were going to be as organized as yours, but there are a lot of people to thank, and not the least of which is Planning Director Murphy, who I think has done an excellent job in providing both the Planning Commission, City Council, and in the community with a solid recommendation based on what I think is the best way to interpret the comprehensive plan. So thank you for that. You know, the college has been here for four hundred years. It's been a good neighbor. There's been students in our neighborhoods. We don't dispute those things. You know, it's going to grow, and it's going to be here long after I'm gone. And I've lived on College Terrace now for a little more than forty years. And I've seen a lot of good things happen in those forty years, a lot of changes. But never have I seen any changes on campus be discussed with the community with the transparency that this issue has been talked about, whether it's fraternity houses, stadium expansion, night football games, alumni house expansion, or the hospitality house. Those are all just kind of thrust it on us and without real discussion. And there was some discussion. But I think the notion that the college is interested in this property and they're using the Real Estate Foundation to purchase it and keep it, keep this discussion alive with us, is a testament to them wanting to be good neighbors. And I believe that they do. You know, lots of good comments from the neighbors. And I echo a lot of sentiments and a lot of the concerns. I've lived there, like I said, now for forty years and had my car vandalized, have had drunk students in my house. I've suffered a lot of those things, and they're not pleasant. But at the same time, there's a lot of benefits that I believe that I derive from living in that proximity. I think Mr. Garris, amongst others, said something, and it's, and Mr. Herzler particularly, the effect is not so much what happens on this Days Inn site. I think the college is going to do a great job making sure that its clients, its students have a well-managed facility. And so I don't have any real problems with that in itself. It's what happens between this new dorm and where the students want to go. The foot traffic, the automobile traffic, the hours, the rubbery, that cause the disturbance in the neighborhood. That's where I think we really, that's where the issue is for me. And again, I think for the first time, I've heard from the college a real commitment to making sure that those challenges are mitigated as best as possible. Will it ever be perfect? It'll never be perfect. But I think it's incumbent upon all of us to support the college so that it can continue to be the world-class institution that it is. It has to provide quality housing for its students. You know, I've got a daughter off at college, and one of the things that we have the option is, do we put our daughter in a dorm with no air conditioning or one with air conditioning? Well, it was a no-brainer. She was going to the one with air conditioning. And we still have dorms on campus without air conditioning. And that's just not what the modern students want when they go to college. And it's certainly not what their parents want for them. And the Days Inn as a dorm may not be what it is either, but we've got to get through this in order for the college to grow and be more successful. And I think in that success, the rest of us in our communities will be successful. Our neighborhoods are fragile. There's no question. I've had the pleasure and honor to serve on both the Planning Commission and City Council now for over fifteen years. And this is an ongoing question that we have, and this question will continue to go on long after my tenure, depending on how I vote on this. My tenure might be sooner than later. But be that as it may, I think it's the right thing to do to support the college in this. But I also think it's the right thing to do for council to continue to have a conversation about the impact that this is having and how we can be an active participant to mitigate challenges and be good stewards to our neighbors in the neighborhoods around this, but not only this, the neighborhoods off Jamestown Road. You know, there are challenges over there that we ought to be mindful of, and I think the discussion should incorporate all of those.
You've still got thirty seconds.
I reserve the right to come back, but I do want to, so I'm going to pass the baton to Councilman Zhang, but I do want to talk about the language in the zoning amendment.
Sure.
You sure?
I am sure.
Okay, great. Well, Carolyn, I have several questions, and I think there are some comments. And let me first say, thank you to the citizens who came out and spoke today. It shows a real big dedication towards our community. I wish it were under better circumstances, but it shows that you care and always willing to engage in this dialogue and find what's best for the city. Carolyn, so in your staff report, in the memo, you said this comes in line with our comp plan. And we've heard from, whether it's topic of density, dwellings, and how it's not full in line with the comp plan. Can you clarify, based on your memo, what exactly makes this proposal in line with our comp plan through staff's eyes? Or Marvin? Doesn't matter.
I think I outlined in the memo, I went through like Chapter Seven land uses, talked about the land use on the vacant lands and so forth. I went through Chapter Eight, which is the neighborhoods and housing, the housing trends. It talked about enforcement of the city's property maintenance code, enforcement of the rental inspections, creation of student renters guide, Neighborhood Relations Committee, concern in the major impact of the college on city neighborhoods. The plan noted it was the responsibility of the college to provide an appropriate amount of student housing on campus, and that the city regulations should encourage student housing and suitable off-campus housing to supplement the housing provided by the college. It also mentions in the comprehensive plan about the midtown planning area being an area that where the student housing should be. So I think in my memo, there were about three or four pages that I quoted specifically about the comprehensive plan and how this project met those requirements in the comprehensive plan.
So for read, did you want to add something?
If I may elaborate just briefly, in the staff conversations, one of the underlying principles in the comprehensive plan is the protection of the residential fabric of Williamsburg. And it talks about it in several ways. One is kind of just the direct protection of those neighborhoods. A second is a realization that there needs to be a partnership between the greater Williamsburg community and the college to maintain exceptional housing on campus. And that exceptional housing on campus provides a desirable environment for students to live in an on-campus environment. That goes back to the first principle of protecting neighborhoods by reducing market stress of students wanting to live off-campus because there's preferable housing on campus. That and our staff conversation was a big part of that, because this is a timed SUP request to allow that improvement of on-campus housing to remain desirable. That was a big part to the staff request of the timing of the SUP and talking to the applicant on that part. The third part dealt with the appropriate locations of off-campus student housing, and that being midtown as the appropriate. While this may not be the best, and I've said it directly to, I think, a lot of the citizens that have spoken, a couple different groups or individually, that, you know, that there's always an impact of any use in this one as well on surrounding properties and neighborhoods. But if we're looking at the greater Williamsburg area and impact on the neighborhoods, the comp plan does specifically say that the midtown area is where it is appropriate, while this property may have more of an impact than other areas in that midtown area. So as far as comp plan consistency on all three levels, this request speaks to that. That's where staff's, staff came from.
Well, thank you for clarifying that. Just another follow-up question real quick. For just seeing the adaptation of these existing old hotel supplies, you know, I'm thinking see Lofts, Tribe Square doesn't really count, but you also have Copper Fox. And for some of these projects, they had the applicant put forward a planned development unit, zoning designation, to handle any additional density that may have not been originally required in the comp plan. So just kind of explain, what was staff's logic in terms of using the SUP process instead of using zoning designation?
Yes, sir. Under planned unit developments, whether it's college or housing or any of those types of development under the planned development, you're looking at a master plan. And the master plan is submitted with the development, and the ordinance allows certain uses by right in those. So staff looked at this, and we looked at this project as being a temporary use of this property, and then feel that supporting a permanent change to a planned unit development for this site was the appropriate way to go about looking at this request. With the special use permit process, we can put conditions on the property and still meet the requirements of looking sometime in the future of hoping that this property gets redeveloped and it's not being used as student housing. So from a staff standpoint, we thought the special use permit process was appropriate for this. And under the special use permit process, you're looking at each project on a case-by-case basis, so you're not setting a precedent for other properties in the neighborhood or in that area.
Can I also just clarify that staff doesn't decide the process? They may provide a recommendation to the applicant, but we don't tell the applicants what to do. We have to respond to what the applicant submits. So if the applicant submits an SUP and rezoning application, that's what we have to go through due process and take through the process to Plan and Commission and to hear. We don't tell them, change your process. We may give them advice based on what we see.
So I'm assuming, based with the SUP process, staff's banking on the notion that the college at some point in the future, including with the sunset clause, will redevelop and consider redeveloping that property. And by putting in with the LB2, you can go back to some, you know, revenue generating entities with the buy right use. Is that a correct assumption?
Right.
Okay. You know, one thing that I was concerned, and I do appreciate the SUP process being flexible enough to impose conditions such as the sunset clause, but on the Days Inn property, that's not the only LB2 parcel on land. So my question is, and my concern is, with the other LB2 properties, whatever we decide today, if we decide one eighty, we decide eighty, one twenty, whatever, will that criteria apply to other parcels of land as well that's destined to LB2?
Other parcels of land, you get to look at on a case-by-case basis and based on the merit of those cases and decide whether you want to approve or deny or make whatever decision council wants on those properties. I did notify all the property owners in the LB2 section on Richmond Road of all the changes to the ordinance, not just those that surround this property. So the other property owners on Richmond Road got notification also.
Okay. And there was some...
And also, I would clarify that the student dormitory under that definition, the student dormitory requires, if you look at the definition, that the property be owned or operated by the college at William &amp; Mary, so that puts some limitation on the other uses also.
Okay. And I guess there were a couple conversations, we've heard some numbers, so around fifty-five, you know, eighty was recommended by Plan Commission. Just can you kind of clarify about the definition with dwelling and what is exactly the density that we can approach with this SUP?
Currently, in the LB2, you're allowed eight by right and fourteen with a special use permit. This project is a little different in that it's not a dwelling unit. To be a dwelling unit, you have to have eating, sleeping, and cooking facilities. And these units will not have cooking facilities. So that was the reason for the ordinance change, to look at it on a, the special use permit on a, the case-by-case, that twenty-one, that two fifty-five point four change, was to look at the density on that, based on that, because usually you base density on dwelling units, and this is not a dwelling unit. These are not considered dwelling units.
Thank you for clarifying that, just because there are a lot of numbers thrown around, and I'm just trying to grapple on where is that exactly, what kind of criteria can we numerically possibly determine this by? But that does clarify a lot.
That was the reason that section was changed, to allow council to look at each on a case-by-case basis.
Understood. Well, are we, is this just a question portion now, or are we going to come back? Or is this...
You may ask more questions. You may make a comment, and we all may have more to say.
All right. Well, I think I'll just say this now. You know, before, I had some questions about the LB2 with the zoning textual amendment. I was uncomfortable with it, but now seeing through the staff analysis of this, it makes sense to go through the SUP, banking on the assumption that the Real Estate Foundation is looking to redevelopment opportunities in the future. And I think one of the folks that spoke put it right, this has to be a coordinated effort. Our partnership with the college is extremely important, from, you know, the past and from this point on, towards what the city council with its policies wants to see in its future. We certainly need our partners, including the citizenry included, to ensure that the city will be ever more the beautiful, beautiful city that we've envisioned and historically. I think with that said, we had a lot of conversations back and forth with citizenry, with the college, and I appreciate all your time, really do, for your involvement in this. One thing that I would ask the college, and I will be supporting the college's application today with both the LB2 and also with the dormitory, but this is what I ask. You know, before, we've never had the college or the Real Estate Foundation sit down with the city and engage in our planning strategic process for our built environment, which is the comp plan. We have an update coming up next year, and I think it'd be great to have the city, or sorry, rather, the college administration come sit down with the city, with the citizens, and let's map out and continue this conversation of what we want to see in that property in the future. I did note that there are some concerns with the sunset clause. That's totally understandable, but I think the conversation and the dialogue must continue on beyond just what happens and whatever action we take today. So what I would propose, and this might be a conversation with council, is perhaps let's get together and let's keep doing an ongoing evaluation of how things are going with this potential, with this particular project. So one, perhaps I'll just suggest some arbitrary numbers. You know, within five months or whenever the next winter break is, when students leave the college, and let's get to college and let's sit down with the neighborhoods and see what has worked so far, what are some of the mitigation stuff that we've put forward that's worked so far, and what are some of the unintended consequences we haven't seen so far? And beyond that, perhaps we can do another yearly evaluation, which I think aligns with the 2018 comp plan. So I think that bringing in the citizens to be involved with the 2018 comp plan, that strategic process with the college will also be important towards determining what the future will be for the college and the city's partnership. And then within five years, once the 2018 comp plan expires, and that's a halfway point for our sunset clause, let's get back together again. Let's talk about, now that five years has been out, and we have another five years looking forward to, what is the college really intending to do with that property? You know, right now, we're going through the SUP process, and we need to determine right now what exactly is the broad framework that the college is envisioning for that part. And I, other than that, I just am in support of it, and hopefully we can go forward together in a real partnership, not just something that we throw around, but truly something that we can get together with the citizens included, and work out solutions that are a win-win for all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a few questions and then come back to other questions from council, and then I'd like to just say a few words before we make a decision. Ms. Shelton, it was raised by one of the speakers, the concerns about setting a precedent by approving this. Could you speak to that matter, please?
Well, you're creating in the zoning district the ability for someone to obtain an SUP an SUP. So in the fact that you're creating that right in the district, someone has the right to come before you and request an SUP. But SUPs are not guaranteed, and they are decided by city council on a case-by-case basis, depending on the circumstances, conditions, and what council ends up deciding with respect to the SUP. So you are giving someone, not just the College of William and Mary, the Real Estate Foundation with this project, but anyone who's in that district, the ability to come before council and make that request.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, you've been working on this for some time now. Thinking back, and I know it might be hard for you to visualize the specifics of each iteration of this plan, but thinking about the original submittal from the applicant and what was presented to the planning commission, did you see that plan evolved during that time, and if so, a little bit, a lot? Could you just speak to that generally?
Yes, sir. In the initial application, what was submitted was it to be student dwelling units. And during the process of discussion, it was, I found out that the units, the college did not plan to put cooking facilities in the, each of the units. So then the request was then modified to do student dormitories. And over the course of that time, as you can see from some of the slides, the process has evolved with the parking, with the fencing, with the amount of parking that'll be available. It's, of course, going to be reduced, the screening, the improvements to the project. So over time, it has evolved to something that's before you today, which has been a positive from what was submitted in the original application.
So you think the process has been beneficial?
Yes, sir, that I think the process has been very beneficial.
The question was raised by Mr. Getty about removing the fencing recommendation from staff's, this fencing line item from staff's recommendation. Could you speak to that, please?
The initial staff recommendation was based on the site plan that showed the parking up by the building, the fencing up by the building with no fencing up front, staff and a six-foot privacy fence. The section that faced Richmond Road did have a metal fencing so that you could see through it, but staff didn't think that was appropriate. So between that and the Architecture Review Board, the applicant revised their proposal. And what you see before you today is the outcome of going to the Architecture Review Board and getting their conceptual review of the project, which basically has the brick pillars with the fencing up front along Richmond Road to sort of tie in the whole project with the fencing, rather than putting fencing back at the building line, and then pulling the fencing back from the right property line and doing landscaping along that right side to help soften that edge, and also to do it on the left-hand side for that first little portion by Montessori school. So I think that fencing has evolved over time since the initial application in November to get a much better product in front of the Architecture Review Board and something that staff thinks is an improvement over the initial app.
So do you think that the line item number two, the proposed six-foot fence, should be located at least five feet from the side property lines to allow for landscaping? Is that still necessary?
I think if we go with what was approved by the Architecture Review Board, that will satisfy the-
Could you say as approved by the Architecture-
Right, because that's basically what the application, the site plan you're seeing on the screen up there.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Collins, I'll ask you a couple of questions. One of the speakers raised the question about a bus stop here, which makes eminent sense to me. Can you speak to what would be necessary in order to, do we have to go through WADA? How do we try to facilitate that?
I'm pretty good at delegating. I might refer a little bit to right-of-way permit with Public Works most likely. WADA is typically the applicant. The local jurisdiction can partner with WADA to do an enhanced bus stop rather than their traditional bench or sign to where it would be covered and have a better base foundation and be more aesthetically attractive and provide some protection from the elements as well. You know, they typically range somewhere between 15 and the low 20,000s for the enhanced bus stop. So that is possible. But we would work through WADA since it would be an adjustment of their bus stop or an additional stop on their route.
Do I have the consensus of colleagues that that's something that council would like staff to pursue?
Well, I think we also need to look at the routing of WADA and sort of the ridership, because as someone pointed out, if the bus stops are on the hour, then students who are trying to get to an hour class are not likely to take the bus. I'm not sure what the trolley stops are. So I think that a bus stop would be very useful if it's actually going to be used.
The trolley route does go there, so it could be a joint.
Well, so I think a bus stop there would go a long way to helping, because if it is something, if WADA through its scheduling can make sure that there, you know, there's dependability and maybe increased frequency, I know the college is part of WADA or sits on that board and certainly helps support it financially. But, you know, if the riders could depend on it being there and see it as an asset and use it, I think that would help eliminate some of the pedestrian and back and forth through the neighborhoods.
Yes. Question time. No, no. Do you have any issues with looking into a bus stop?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. Mr. Collins, the other question that's come up is, there will be increased William and Mary police presence in and around the area of the Days Inn, looking after the safety of those who live there, and also as a side benefit, providing some degree of deterrence for behaviors onsite and off-site. But currently, there's not the jurisdiction for campus police to enforce laws or enforce issues off of college property. Is that something the city could commit to looking at once our new police chief is brought on board?
Yes, that is something. It's more complex than just, you know, allowing them to enforce in the city. And we have to make sure that a lot of policies and training and how things are enforced are equitable across our jurisdiction, so that we're not treating one population base different than another under the law. But they have a professional police force with Chief Spro and I know Chief Barker. They're starting that conversation. They both do directed patrols in and around these neighborhoods. Right now, it's just how to coordinate those better and continue that communication. Once we get our new police chief formally hired, I think that's a good opportunity to have a committed conversation with the college. And I know that in my discussions with college leadership, I've humbly requested that they put off that request until we had a police chief, so that the city could be adequately represented in that conversation with someone with the experience to engage with this talented a chief as they have. So, yes.
And is it correct that the college would be interested in this conversation? Mr. Getty, Chief Cheesebro? I'm seeing nods of the head that, okay, well, we'll take that as a yes. Thank you. The other question that's been raised, and I see it come in a couple of different forms, Mr. Hertzler raised it most explicitly, but I also sensed it in what Mr. Tally and Mr. Kaiser were saying, is the Neighborhood Relations Committee has a certain place and function, and I do think it has been a benefit to the community. It may not have resolved every issue that's come before it. It certainly hasn't solved every problem, or we wouldn't be having this discussion today. But maybe this is an important decision, and what we do here will impact this side of town for at least 10 years. Is there any, you see a value in setting up some kind of working group, task force, whatever we want to call it, through city staff that monitors the variety of issues that can come about as a result of this project that's different in degree and different in scope from some of the issues that the Neighborhood Relations Committee really has the opportunity to impact? And work, create that ongoing dialogue that Councilman Zhang has talked about and Mr. Pons has talked about, and Ms. Ramsey, I'm sure, would agree, that we need to keep going after this, whatever action we take today, to ensure that we make whatever decision, the best possible decision it can be.
So if directed, I'd be happy to establish a city manager working group to maintain an evaluation of this use. I would encourage to look not just at this use, but neighborhoods in general, but definitely target this particular use since it's the impetus of the action. The city measures a number of things right now, and I would love the opportunity to work with citizens in the college to talk about what we're measuring and how that may be used to determine impacts or indices to see how neighborhoods improve or don't improve over time and how we can act towards that. A benefit of a city manager working group is that the city manager is responsible for implementation, so that enforcement authorities fall within the departments under my purview. While the NRC is a great communication tool and community relations tool, it does not have an enforcement authority, which I believe a couple of the citizens brought up.
Yes.
If something is in violation of city code or state law and it's brought to my attention, it will be enforced within our limitations of the law. So if we do see things that come up that are illegal and need immediate action, then I can make sure the resources are appropriated to the right place to take that action and report back to council and the community regularly.
And we realize your plate is pretty full at the moment, but we'd look forward to a recommendation on how that might work as you can get to that, hopefully, next couple of, what do you think is realistic?
Well, I think realistically, we need to have it in place and talk about it in the community well before the residence hall opens, which my understanding would be the fall semester. So we would need to get that done by the summer, have it in place, and work through any kinks prior to that.
Thank you. I was hoping that was your answer. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Zhang.
Anyone else want to go first? Sorry, I'm kind of jumping the gun. Mr. Getty, I was wondering if I can ask you a question real quick, or someone from the college? Thank you. There are a lot of gorillas in this room, but I think that one of the big gorillas there is kind of the idea of what's going to happen to the Taioga Lot right next door. Now, I know you can't really talk much and speak much to it, but, you know, has the Real Estate Foundation expressed an interest in that property? And if so, are there any ideas to come with it?
I will gladly punt this question to Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
We would be not doing our job if we didn't recognize that right next to it is a vacant lot. But I think the, whatever happens there really ties into more of that longer-term picture. Because when, you know, you talked about, you know, looking at it five years and then looking at it at 10 years, and when you want, you know, the bigger footprint, the more opportunities there are for those reuses that we all might consider. So it'd be wise for us as a group, and as we go through the planning exercise, to see that you've got a large footprint, you ought to look at it as a large footprint, even though at this point, it will have two different owners.
Right. And the reason why I bring it up, because, you know, there's some semblance of tying that to the Days Inn in that several constituents have, or citizens rather, have expressed an interest in seeing some sort of, you know, whether it's a coffee house or some sort of community association building in that area, where neighbors and folks from the Days Inn dormitory could get together and speak to it. But that ultimately comes down to what the blueprint will be and whether the Real Estate Foundation is open to an idea like that and looking to the Taioga Lot. So, well, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Just a reminder for clarification, the Taioga Lot is owned by the City of Williamsburg and not the college or the college foundation. So what happens on the Taioga Lot is the decision of the city. And that is part of the leverage of the conversation moving forward with the college and why having the opportunity to have a conversation is important to be able to transition this area to some, potentially to some other use beyond student housing.
Thank you.
Mr. Pons?
So going back to, I think, a comment Mr. Tally made about unintended consequences in creating the zoning. And I know that in the definition, it talks about the dormitories mean residential space operated or leased by the college of William and Mary. Just a thought, should we try to tighten that up in any way? I don't know how. I mean, if we don't want other dorms in the LB2 district, now would be the time to try to figure out some language to keep that from, you know, more dorms coming into that area. You know, define it as, you know, only in repurposing motels, perhaps. I don't know.
And Ms. Shelton, if I may, to, for any applicant to come forward for a student dormitory-type facility, that would have to be done under a special use permit?
Yes.
So we always reserve that right for oversight.
I don't disagree with that, but it becomes more challenging once you've, unless the language is tight, tighter.
So do you have a suggestion?
I don't.
Okay.
Other than, as I said, repurposed motels, you know, that would narrow it down pretty succinctly.
Ms. Murphy, do you see an issue with that?
I thought we had made it pretty tight by being operated or leased by the College of William and Mary, which limited-
So it just has a, and maybe it's not a bad idea, but Casey Field could become a dorm operated, owned by a private entity, but leased to the college.
That's correct.
And then you could have, you know, 900 to 1,000 people living there, and is that a desired outcome?
Then council gets to look at that on its own merits and decide on that.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with changing the language, because it doesn't impact this particular issue. And if the college wants to come back at some future date and make the case for why we should consider other property, even outside of the SUP process, they certainly have that ability. Ms. Ramsey, you have a thought on that?
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Say a few words.
Please.
Thank you.
We have five minutes.
Yeah, I know. I get to run. Thank you again to everybody who's come out today. This conversation didn't begin today, and it won't end today. Each of us as council people have met with residents within the neighborhoods a number of times. We've met with college representatives, and we've talked with city staff. Do we have a perfect plan? Probably not. But the college is, I'm not going to tell you anything you haven't already heard today, but I just feel better recapping my position on this. College is in the middle of a multi-year plan to renovate its dormitories. That's a really important effort. As Mr. Collins talked about, those dormitories need to be top-notch so that they're more appealing to students in order to get the students to attend the college and in order to get those students who attend the college to want to stay on campus and live in those dormitories. We also know that the college does an extremely good job of maintaining order and control within the college housing environment. So I commend them for making that effort. They bought the hospitality house a few years ago in an effort to mitigate the problems created by the renovations of these dorms and to provide more housing for students as opposed to just jettisoning them into the community and letting us deal with them. They did that through college purchase of the property, which meant that the college was the sole decider as to how that would progress, and the city and the residents had no input on that. Now they want, because, whether it's because they do not have the ability to use the entire hospitality house or one-tribe place as they originally envisioned, or for other reasons, now they're looking to acquire the Days Inn. This time, they've chosen a different path. They could have bought it through the Real Estate Foundation and deeded it over to the college, and we would be having no conversations today except how are we going to deal with this in our community? They could also have done nothing, in which case, we would now have 180 more students next year looking for housing in our residential neighborhoods. Legally, that's 60 more houses that would have to accommodate those 180 students. Each student that we reduce from the capacity of that Days Inn project is one more student who's looking for housing in a neighborhood near you or in a house near you. But they're also doing it through the Real Estate Foundation. By them doing that, it also keeps the prop- the state, that property would be gone from the city's tax rolls forever, and we would never claim any more revenue from it. Now, if they redevelop the property in the future, if they want to, as I understand is the intention of the Real Estate Foundation eventually, if they want to put some other use, whether it's office space or some multipurpose space or something I can't even envision at this point, the potential there is for the city to gain revenue from that, and that is a good thing. Residents have real concerns with this proposal. We've heard them today. We've heard them before today. We've heard them in years before today, and we will continue to hear them. And they're valid. People are concerned. People are afraid because of the experiences that they have lived through in neighborhoods near the college where certain behaviors, whether intentionally or unintentionally, have impacted the quality of life. Yet, there's still something desirable about living close to the college in these neighborhoods that keeps people there, but it is a delicate balance. So the one concern I have heard since in my time on council and in my time on the planning commission, which is probably now approaching 17 or 18 years, the number one concern from residents has been the impact of student rentals in single-family homes in single-family neighborhoods. Whether it's because of the ratio of rental housing to owner-occupied housing is going to shift the balance in the neighborhood, whether there are too many renters in a particular house, which creates a critical mass, which causes a problem, or whether it's the impact of a rental directly next door to somebody's home. That is the biggest issue I have heard, and I believe the same for my colleagues. So that is why we've helped private developers work with projects like City Lofts, with Griffin Arms, and with City Green to try to take some of the pressure off these residential neighborhoods adjacent to the college. We've also worked with the Real Estate Foundation previously on the Tribe Square project to create more housing for students that's directly under college control that, again, takes a little bit more pressure off of these neighborhoods. So what are the options we have today? We could just say, no, we're not going to do this. Or we could try to work with the college and make it happen. If we don't do anything, the college has another option, and they can pass this property on to the state, and we will have had a very nice conversation. And again, they can do whatever they want. I believe that what they do would be better informed based upon the conversation we've had, and I sincerely believe the college appreciates this. I don't want to, I'm not trying to gush over how great the college is. They are great. But I think they've really put forth a lot of effort here to make this project better through this process and through the help of staff and through a lot of conversations. That has come about. So in my opinion, the best way that we, the best option that we have today is to move forward with the proposal in some form of what's been submitted by staff as a recommendation, but to try to do everything we can, continuing the conversation with the college, to mitigate the collateral impact of this facility in those neighborhoods and prepare ourselves in the next decade or so when this property comes back into the taxable arena. Those students can be housed somewhere else. Hopefully, that would be in a property or facility more central to the college, which I think is really what they, they're striving for in the long run, but maybe haven't had the time to do yet because of what happened with One Tribe Place. So I plan on supporting this. Now, that takes us to a couple of questions. Does somebody want to make a motion, or does somebody have anything else to say?
No, sir, and I'm comfortable.
Oh, I do, one more thing. I totally agree with Mr. Getty's suggestion that we remove the requirement for the security guard on site, because I don't think that's where the issues are going to be. I'd much rather that that time, attention, and any resources connected with that be associated to the patrolling of the areas around the Days Inn as opposed to a security person on site.
Agreed.
Agreed.
I'm not exactly sure what to make a motion on.
What do you like?
I'll attempt.
It's a staff recommendation.
And I say I attempt, and I'll, you know, step in where you feel need to.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
How about we start, let's do these separately. Let's do Proposed Ordinance 17-02 first. And we can just, I think, do that straight with your.
Sure. Okay, so I move to approve Plan Commission PCR number 17-002, approve the request of the William Mary Real Estate.
Let's do the one.
The other one.
Do the rezoning.
Approve the proposed ordinance number 17-02.
Is this where we would change the language to?
To change.
No need to change?
Not on, based on my behalf.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Scott?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Zhang.
Ms. Ramsey?
Hi.
Now, we could do the second one and strike the requirement for the onsite security guard?
Okay. We are comfortable with the fence as.
Well, and we can, we're sorry, we can change that to as approved by the ARB.
Okay.
What about the numbers? About the quantity? I'm sorry?
I don't think that's part of staff's recommend.
That's not part of staff's recommendation.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve PCR number 17-002, the request of the William Mary Real Estate Foundation for a special use permit to revert the Days Inn at 902 Richmond Road from a motel to a student dormitory with the following. Number one, this permit shall be valid for a period of not to exceed 10 years from the date of the approval. We're going to exclude the, yeah, with no gate enclosures to be constructed on the property, that a fence be constructed as approved by the Architectural Review Board. This approval is limited to the current building only. Any major changes to increase the density footprint or construct additional additions on the property must be submitted to the city, submitted and approved by the city. The college shall provide bike racks at the location.
And this one, it would be approved by the city manager?
Yep. I think the, the college needs to adequately address the parking needs of the project in conjunction with city managers.
Or a parking plan must be submitted and approved by city manager.
Yeah, thank you. A parking plan must be submitted and approved by the city manager prior to the issuance of the building permit for the site. And finally, a minor site plan being submitted and approved by the staff addressing the site plan issues noted above.
Scott, did you catch all that?
Did I, did I hear something about the security guard?
No, that's not, it's not in the motion.
Eliminated. Finished? Second?
Scott? Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes. Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Zhang.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Motion passes. This takes us to our second public hearing of the day, which is the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, 400 South Nassau Street. Before I go any further, I will, well, actually, let's just take a moment, let everybody leave. to 400 South Nassau Street. As an employee of the foundation, I will not be participating in the conversation. I will refrain or abstain from voting on it, and I will ask Vice Mayor Foster to run this portion of the meeting.
All righty. Public hearing on two matters. PCR 17-005, rezoning 20,300 square feet from Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area, Colonial Williamsburg to Museum Support. Proposed ordinance 17-03 and PCR 17-06, special use permit for parking area extension. Looks like Ms. Murphy has something for us.
Sir, Vice Mayor Foster and members of the city council, the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation is proposing to rezone a portion of the property at 400 South Nassau Street as shown on the slide, from Colonial Williamsburg Historic Area CW to Museum Support MS to accommodate a new entrance pavilion to the art museums at Colonial Williamsburg. The applicant states in their application that a major feature of the museum expansion is to increase the visibility and accessibility of the museum from the historic area. This will be achieved by changing the location of the entrance from the public hospital fronting on Francis Street to a new entrance on Nassau Street. A new entrance on Nassau Street is proposed that includes an entry pavilion on the museum side and across the street. The second part of the request is for a special use permit for an expansion of the parking area to construct 34 parking spaces in the CW district as shown on this slide. This slide actually shows the rezoning area in the red and the special use permit portion in blue. This slide shows two renderings, which shows the entry pavilion on one and both sides of the street. The location of the proposed entrance, hmm, can't say that today, pavilion in CW district is not allowed. The applicant has stated that the pavilion that spans both sides of Nassau Street is needed to increase the visibility and accessibility of the museum entrance to the historic area. This has resulted in the applicant requesting a rezoning for only the portion of the property that is needed to accommodate the new pavilion on the edge of the district from Colonial Williamsburg Historic CW to Museum Support MS. The major expansion of the museum will help maintain the commercial and economic development opportunities of the downtown area as recommended in Chapter 10 of the 2013 Comprehensive Plan. The second part of the proposal is for the special use permit to stand the parking area associated with the new entrance. They propose to construct 34 parking spaces to offset the spaces lost with the pavilion and reconfiguration of the parking lot. The proposal is in harmony with the 2013 Comprehensive Plan, the zoning district, adjacent properties, and surrounding neighborhoods. Planning Commission held a public hearing on February the 15th. Other than the applicant, no one spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommends to city council by a vote of 5-1 that the rezoning and special use permit requests be approved as outlined in staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. CW representatives are also here if you have any questions of them.
Ms. Ramsey?
No, the only thing I would say is I've seen the plans for the expansion of the art museum, and I think they're fabulous, and this ties in with the overall plan and in full support of it.
Yes, this is an elevation museum expansion?
Can't come soon enough, I think.
All right. No presentation from the applicant.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Vice Mayor Foster, members of the city council, my name is Neil Elwine with Colonial Williamsburg Foundation. The museum expansion project is a major and exciting project for Colonial Williamsburg. It's going to significantly increase our museum offering, and we believe it'll ultimately result in increased guest satisfaction and be a great benefit to the community. The major feature of the museum expansion, one of the major features is this, the addition, the main entrance to the museum, and that's what we're focusing on today. This will remedy one of the longstanding challenges that we face with the existing museum, and that is the modest and unassuming entrance at the public hospital. It's been a longstanding problem for us, you know, to really get good visibility to really, guests that aren't familiar with the area and so forth can easily pass the museum by and not really realize what's behind the public hospital because of the modest entrance. Since the existing museum is located against the historic area boundary to the north, the best opportunity, of course, was to minimize zoning impact was to design an entrance off of Nassau Street. The new entrance on the west side of Nassau Street features a prominent central cupola-top pavilion with flanked by the arcades, kind of in a curved shape on each side of the two-story center pavilion. The idea of mirroring that arcade on the other side of the street had a lot of attraction for us, and as we were doing design development, we really thought it helped the sense of arrival, the sense of defining the entrance, improving the visibility to the area. It really ties that parking area over on the east side as a point of, you know, where we can have a nice landscape, benches, and so forth to really enhance the sense of arrival. So we really felt like it was worth the effort to try to go for the rezoning for that arcade on the east side. When we went for the request, we were focusing on minimizing the extent of the rezoning. That's changing from CW Historic Area to Museum Support. So just enough rezoning to accommodate the new construction of the arcade. And then the special exception request to expand the parking to the north is essentially to offset the parking that we were losing by placing the arcade on the east. So ultimately, the last observation was the sensitivity to the historic area and the 18th century John Custis property, which is essentially the pasture area to the north and east right now of Nassau. And we felt that really this was not intrusive, that we still have good separation. Should at any time in the future that be decided to develop that historic site, we still have plenty of area for buffer and so forth, so we felt that it was a good option. And lastly, just to express our appreciation to city staff, to appreciate the planning commission's efforts and appreciate city council giving consideration to our request. Thank you.
All right, that'll open the public hearing. One that wishes to speak, this is your time. See you, no one. Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion. Probably need to do this, can we do this in two or?
You can do it in one motion.
Do one, one motion.
Just before that, I just want to compliment Colonial Williamsburg, you know, on their efforts to reinvest in the museum and what they do, I think. It goes a long way to helping shore up our economy here, creates jobs, helps create, you know, continue the message that is essential for Colonial Williamsburg so that the future can learn from the past and what the city can do to help, we should. And so I fully support it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that PCR 17-005, approve proposed ordinance 17-03, and PCR 17-06, approve the request of the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for a special use permit to extend the parking area by 34 parking spaces at 400 South Nassau Street associated with the new entrance to the art museums. Colonial Williamsburg as shown on the conceptual site layout plan dated December 22, 2016, as recommended by Planning Commission.
Second.
Ms. D?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Friling?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
May I have this back?
Yeah, since I didn't touch it.
Yes, we now have a third public hearing today. License to the College of William and Mary to install fiber optic line and related facility within city rights of way?
And I'll handle that one. Mr. Mayor and council, in 2011, city council granted the College of William and Mary a general license to install fiber optic lines and facilities in city rights of way, but only those rights of way that were immediately adjacent to the campus, provided they secure a right-of-way permit from the Department of Public Works. Since that time, we've had one request that fell outside of that general license area, and in 2013, city council approved the request for a particular license related to that project, which was for 26 Scotland Street. With city council's action on the SUP today, the college will also then need to connect the campus to the new dormitory space that council has approved with the SUP. And so it is staff's recommendation, because it's not covered by the general license, to grant the College of William and Mary a license for the fiber optic line that they will need for this project. for this project. The fiber optic line, and there may be a slide, will travel along Brook Street to Richmond Road and down Richmond Road to the facility. It's staff's recommendation that the license be approved to correspond with the length of the SUP, and you've done this before, so it's what you need to do in order to grant the right-of-way, the access to the rights of way, and staff would recommend that City Council approve the license agreement to the College of William &amp; Mary.
Questions for Ms. Shelton.
Again, due to the same reason of our, in our first public hearing, I won't participate in this discussion.
Thank you.
No questions.
Okay, that will open the public hearing. Anybody who'd like to address counsel on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, come back to council for comment. No comment.
Just a comment, and maybe a question, and just a thought. You know, we have stated in our GIOs to kind of expand, you know, fiber optics and technology into the city, particularly over there at the Quarter Path area, to help enhance our offerings to potential businesses. You know, we've heard for years that fiber optics is kind of the missing element in order to bring FIOs or competition to Cox in a meaningful way to the city. And so I just wonder if, when these types of operations are occurring, where we're running fiber optics through the city, as Ms. Shelton noted, we've delivered it now, or we haven't, but the college has delivered to four twenty-sixth Scotland Street. We know that we've brought fiber optics down Route sixty, essentially down Richmond Road to James Blair, and so now we have this opportunity. The question I have is, is there a way to piggyback on this technology or the installation of this technology so that we can start to deliver fiber optics into the city in a meaningful way? So I don't know the answer to that, but then maybe Small or somebody else can speak to that.
Wouldn't that have to be to a certain mass for a vendor to want to come in and establish that service?
Well, and so, yeah, they would want, in order to justify the expense of it, they would want a certain number of customers. But here we have somebody already putting money towards it. How the hell can we piggyback on that so that?
And expand it.
That's right.
Would anybody like to take a stab at this, Mr. Barr, Mr. Pons?
If I may start for a second. There's a statutory process for the city to be involved in any kind of digital technology expansion, especially if you're talking about the delivery to third-party customers and not for our own use. Staff would need additional time to look into the legalities of that process and what steps we would need to take to get there. We'd be happy to discuss that with the college if time allows and doesn't delay their ability to get their facility up and going, and/or, and/or, I believe it's also part of your goals, initiatives and outcomes for the city to look comprehensively at the city, at how we can improve the digital infrastructure within the city to encourage both business growth as well as individual connectivity.
Sure. So I don't seek to delay the college's opportunity to move forward with this. You know, the elephant in the room with the last discussion with the college was, their Plan B was, state would buy the days in and we would all be sitting here with nothing. Here, I think we have a real opportunity in a meaningful way to help deliver a benefit, the college could help participate, maybe not at their expense, but participate in delivering a benefit to the community that, you know, without this coordination would not be possible. And so I would, I would like to have the city manager and staff work with the college and see if there isn't an opportunity to do just that, to benefit the neighborhood, or the neighbor, the city in general.
Do you think that's something that Mr. Getty can speak to, whether, you know?
I think staff needs time to understand what we would want to do. This is really, we're talking about two and a half blocks, basically, and I think the question is, when they do this, is there a way they can do it that facilitates some ease of use of that same conduit down the road?
Got it.
Yeah, to clarify, that just the ability to drop a dark fiber line in the ground when they're doing it, I mean, we know we can do that for our use, but the, we need to look into the legality of, can we drop a dark fiber line that will eventually be available for a private provider to provide service to customers or for this, some future authority to provide?
What is clear is we don't know what we don't know.
Right, that's right.
If we don't ask and we miss the opportunity, then we've lost that chance. And I don't want to lose that chance to start to bring dark fiber into the city, you know, for the residents, because that is one, you know, one of the things we keep hearing about is, you know, how do we, how do we get FIOs and how do we get higher-speed internet? And so if this is an opportunity to have that conversation, then I would encourage staff to do that.
So is that something that requires that we defer a decision on this? That's why I wanted to ask Mr. Getty. I was confused as to whether this would be in time of fashion.
Yeah, well, so I wouldn't propose that we defer it. I think we can move forward with this application.
And I think the point is, as these come up, we need to know that information. If we can find it out now, we'll be better prepared in the future, and there may still be an opportunity to do something here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins, did you want to add something else?
The city attorney shared that we have a similar agreement with James City County to have dark fiber on one of their loops, and so we've done this with a partner jurisdiction, neighboring jurisdiction. We just need to look into the legalities and the willingness of the county, of the college to have a similar arrangement, and then what we do with those dark fibers becomes a legal question as well, but we'd be happy to look into that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Do you have a motion?
Ms. Mayor, I move that City Council, should City Council approve the SUP for use of the property at nine oh two Richmond Road by the College of William &amp; Mary for student dormitory, and that City Council also approve the license agreement to enable the college to install fiber optic cable and infrastructure to serve the use and authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement with the College of William &amp; Mary governing said installation.
Second.
Ms. Scott.
Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Abstain, excuse me.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
That concludes our public hearings for today. Takes us to monthly financial statements, Mr. Collins.
The finance director and I are both here. If you have any questions, I would just point out that revenues continue to track as we budgeted relatively flat this year. Expenses are tracking slightly below, so we're moving on track, maintaining a likely increase to our reserve at the end of the year as traditionally we do. We're monitoring the hotel rooms and meal taxes closely due to a soft January, but that's, that was anticipated, given the scale back of Colonial Williamsburg for maintenance and operations that month, as well as renovations to the inn and weather during January. So as we move forward, we'll keep a close watch on that. Anecdotally, we've heard positive comments from several hoteliers and especially restaurants for February, so we're looking forward to February's numbers.
Questions?
No.
Monthly departmental operating reports, anything you'd like to highlight, sir?
Staff is here if you have any questions. I would point out that property maintenance has been active. A lot of that activity deals with the council's request for us to look at enforcement of solid waste and making sure that the trash cans get back and that we're notifying people and that, so our number of visits to properties has doubled from last year at this time, and that's just being more proactive in the neighborhoods in that area.
Just wanted to know one thing. I know this in operating reports that for our eGovernment website, this is, correct if I'm wrong, Mark, this is their second year that eGovernment surpassed a million dollars in revenue, and I think that's incredible, just to speak to the fact that citizens are utilizing our online tools that are being provided by the government, and it just shows that we have a more open government, are very accessible at that, so just wanted to highlight that as well. So keep it up.
Thank you. Anybody else? City manager reports. First is accepting certain streets into city street system, proposed resolution seventeen dash zero three.
And I will quickly hand it off to Dan Clayton, the public works director.
Mayor, City Council, you have before you Resolution number seventeen dash oh three, which accepts certain streets into the city system and requests that we receive maintenance payments from VDOT. VDOT requires a resolution as part of their approval process, and they've also been out in the field with us and reviewed these streets. As you can see, four of the streets, Monahill Circle, Idwood Lane, Braxton Court and Haynes Drive, are streets that we've already been maintaining for some time, but changes to VDOT's street criteria for acceptance now allow us to get maintenance money for those streets. For the other three streets in the resolution, first, Monticello Avenue, just a very short section that we picked up on when we're doing our, an annual, our audit of all of our city streets, which is about a point-one mile section that we had missed previously. Battery Boulevard from Route sixty, the corporate limits is included, even though it's in James City County. The corporate limit is about halfway between Route sixty and the water fountain roundabout. The city is maintaining this section as a matter of practicality. We don't think it makes a lot of sense for us to go down there and sweep the street half a block or plow, snow and pick our plows up. This is something that we do with VDOT, we work together on them, like Route one ninety-nine, there's a section of one ninety-nine that's in the city, but they maintain, so we go back and forth on these kind of, these kind of issues. And finally, the Quarter Path spur was not initially accepted because it initially got Battery Boulevard, it ended at the dirt road of Battery Boulevard, wasn't constructed yet, so now the Battery Boulevard is complete, we've added the spur road in, which is really the right turn, the long right-turn lane. So altogether, we've, we're adding one point-two-one lane miles of street, and we'll be receiving somewhere around close to fifteen thousand dollars per year in additional maintenance payments.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Dan.
Every penny counts.
Yep.
Do we have a motion?
I move that Council approve Resolution seventeen dash oh three.
Second.
Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey. Aye.
Takes us to our 2017 asphalt overlay schedule award of bid, Mr. Small.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, it's spring, flowers are blooming and the smell of asphalt's in the air.
Spoken like a true engineer.
You know, it's just what I like to do, sir. The, this year's schedule is somewhat large. We're proposing to, we've got a whole different group of streets this year. We're adding on, about half of the money that was proposed for this project comes from the state of good repair money that we had allocated earlier this year, we'd received last summer from VDOT. It's a hundred percent state money used to basically repave and provide maintenance for primary roads, particularly those with state route numbers. This year, four roads, or last year, four roads were selected to be part of that, and we've included that in the paving schedule, including bypass road, Page Street, Lafayette Street, that wasn't, to complete what was done from last year, as well as Henry Street from Lafayette Street down to Francis Street. And these are based on the condition of the pavements analyzed by VDOT. They come out with a truck that actually does a full computer analysis of the road's condition to see how it's, how it's holding up. We've got a whole bunch of other streets out there as well, local streets, those out in the Holly Hills Yorkshire area, that'll complete kind of that area that we've been working towards completing over the last few years. We also have a few streets out in the Culinary Arts District area, the Northeast Triangle, which includes those from the primary extension, as well as Parkway Drive from Zelkova Road into Second Street. The other areas that we're looking at is in the downtown area, to finish up the area right around Boundary Street, around the community building, parking lot, Nassau Street, as well as South Boundary Street, all the way to Henry, and Ireland Street. We received four bids on the project from the four major paving contractors in the area. This year, Alan Myers was the low bidder with a bid of seven hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven. Alan Myers was, is familiar to the city. They haven't actually done any paving for us. However, they're the current, they've done a lot of paving out in the county. They're currently working on segment two of I sixty-four, and they're going to be starting on paving of Jamestown Road from the ferry dock all the way to Route one ninety-nine within the next few weeks. We feel very comfortable with the bid, and they're well-qualified to perform the work, so we recommend approval of them for the low bid of seven hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven. And all money from this would come out of the FY seventeen CIP.
Questions for Mr. Small?
No.
Aaron, yes, no, Mr. Small, excuse me. I know that we usually try to do something special on Duke of Gloucester Street in tone and color, but we don't necessarily do that in other parts with asphalt. Is there any special consideration to where it crosses Duke of Gloucester Street, or will that area all be done in the special?
That'll be done very similar to the way that we, when we pave Henry, and you can see when we cross Duke of Gloucester Street with Henry Street, that portion of the street is traversed by vehicles, and is open to vehicles all the time, and so we really need to make sure we've got a good pavement section to there. So when we pave through, we're trying to blend in the slopes and make sure the drainage works, but there won't be any special extra things that we do to make the pavement immediately brown. We do have our special, we call it the Williamsburg Asphalt Mix, that does have the brown gravel in it. It eventually wears down so that the streets do turn brown. For instance, you can go out to the far end of, beyond Lake Matoka, and see the brown streets of Jamestown Road, and you see that's just, it's worn down after a while and shows those brown rocks.
Mayor, I move that Council award the bid and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Alan Myers for the 2017 asphalt overlay schedule based on unit prices and the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Second. Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Takes us to the third city manager report. It's great, Mr. Collins, how you have other people do all your reports for you. I guess that's what you call delegating. The third one is the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detection Commission Service Agreement, proposed Resolution seventeen dash zero two. Mr. Sarah?
Good afternoon, Mayor Friling and members of council. As you're well aware, the Juvenile Detention Commission's eighteen localities have been working on a revision to the original nineteen ninety-four service agreement, which has never been changed. Efforts last September by most of the boards of the eighteen localities, including this City Council, resulted in approval of resolutions providing for a new service agreement, but unfortunately, at least one locality was not on board at that time. We knew back last fall it was going to be difficult to get all eighteen members on board with any change in the service agreement. So over the past several months, the commission attorney worked with King and Queen County to address concerns that they had last fall. The most important change is basing locality costs each year on the average usage of the most recent five operating years. Localities will know what their costs are for the next year while working on their budgets, as opposed to estimating future usage and budgeting unknown numbers. It'll also help with smoothing costs over time. So the new agreement includes the five-year averaging, it deletes all references to perdiem charges, which will not apply any longer, removes provisions that applied to construction of the Merrimack Center back in the mid-nineties, and it eliminates references to King George County, which is no longer a member. King and Queen County Board of Supervisors adopted this new resolution last month, as did several others since then have approved at this point, and we expect that all the remaining localities will approve the new agreement in March and April, and hopefully we can use the new five-year averaging formula starting July one.
Questions? Comments? Motion?
Oh, I recommend that, or I move that City Council approve Resolution seventeen dash oh two amending the service agreement for the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission.
Seconded.
Ms. Scott.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Friling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Takes us to the city attorney report. Correction of property description shown ordinance seventeen dash zero one, proposed ordinance seventeen dash zero four. Ms. Shelton? Ms. Shelton, do you have someone to do this for you?
No, I'm going to do it myself. City council adopted 1701 vacating an alley off of Newport Avenue, and we've recorded that and since then discovered that we had an error in the property description where we referenced the wrong lot number and east-west in one of the paragraphs of the property description. Because this is going to affect, cause confusion with the title, we need to correct that problem. And so I am coming and requesting that city council correct that error that my office made by adopting proposed ordinance 17 dash 04.
Once this is corrected, are there any lingering impacts or?
The, the appeal period has run, there's an internal inconsistency with the document, so no, I don't think so. I think we're fine. We'll record this and then the title will be clear.
Questions?
Just as when we considered this matter last month, I will not be participating in this as I represented.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 17 dash 04, correcting the property description shown in ordinance 17 dash 01.
Seconded.
Scott?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Abstain.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Takes us to item number six, unfinished business. Anything anyone would like to share?
No.
New business? I will just share, it's not really unfinished or new business, but in conversation today with Aaron DeGraff of the Muscarelli, he let me know that the visitation to the Botticelli exhibition is currently tracking about 15% ahead of what they did for the DaVinci exhibition, which I don't, I, I think that's a tremendous increase over a tremendously successful event. So just thought council would be interested based upon our support of that exhibition.
And I think just to build on that, that's not necessarily the quality exhibit, although the Botticelli is a phenomenal exhibit, but just getting the Muscarelli known out in the community, word of mouth, and so year over year, you would expect and anticipate that, you know, these types of things would increase in visitation. And so I think that to council's credit, supporting this type of initiative goes a long way.
And I believe there was an article in the Richmond Times-Dispatch fairly recently that described it as the best exhibition that's been run ever in the state of Virginia. Takes us to open forum, where anybody is welcome to address counsel on any matter. I have one speaker's card, Mr. Gary Shelley. Mr. Shelley, if you kindly come forward and just, for the record, just state your name and address.
Thank you very much. I am Gary Shelley. I live at 205 Indian Springs Road. I'll be real quick. I'm following up on my previous two appearances, last month and the month before, and I requested from you specifically, Mayor, why minutes of a particular meeting were not provided to the public as required. And second of all, the document that was later substituted and inserted in place of that, those minutes, if that meets FOI requirements, I won't go into details because I've spoken on them many times before. But thirdly, and perhaps most importantly at this point, I would like to know why it is that I have not been responded to up to this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Anybody else like to address counsel on any matter? Seeing none, do we have any items for closed session?
Do.
Oh, hot dog.
Move to go into closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711A6 for the purpose of discussing the consideration of the investment of public funds where competition bargaining is involved, where if made publicly, the financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected.
Scott?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
We'll take a five-minute recess and reconvene in closed session. Thank you.